Good evening, you got a call to go order the planning commission regular meeting for November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. I'll ask the court to call roll.
Anderson.
Here.
Badger.
Here.
Broker.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Dawn.
Here.
Okay.
Present.
Ma'am.
Here. You have a quorum. Hey, before moving forward to the tonight's approval of tonight's agenda. I am on behalf of the full planning commission want to first congratulate Russ Gardner on being reelected to city council. Uh, their current elections and even more important warmly welcome this our commissioner Holly Anderson on being newly elected to city council and will be appointed. I think on the twenty-seventh of this month, I believe it's going to be the date.
For a week.
Whenever they meet.
Yeah, the the next meeting.
So congratulations to you both. I can tell you that on behalf of the commission, we look forward to our continuing favorable partnership with. Working with city council as well as the city of Sagatuck towards the betterment of our overall community and its citizens. And so. Thank you and thanks for all your work that you've done here as well as what you're going to be doing for us at the council. With that, let's move forward to the approval of the agenda. It was been in everyone's packet. Everyone's had an opportunity to review.
Some of it.
Got a motion. Is that a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Opposed. Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Item three, approval of the minutes. You have two packets of minutes in your kit. The first one was the minutes from our regular meeting October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Did everyone have an opportunity to review those? Any comments or corrections to them or additions? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Sagatuck Planning Commission for October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three and the special meeting minutes from October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes or aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed. See none. Minutes are approved. Next item would be the. Public comment section. However, before we move into the public comment. As the chair of the commission, I would like to make just the following statements and comments. As I stated earlier, you know, the planning commission is a working partner to the city management and to the city council. The planning commission and us as commissioners, we serve at the direction and at the approval of the city council. The planning commission's role is to review, to approve and to make many times recommendations to the city council on items related to zoning and city planning. These responsibilities, I know I take and everyone here at the table takes very seriously. And I'd like to thank you for that um as we're here tonight. I think each of us commissioners takes significant time in advance of each monthly meeting to review the packets come prepared. Then in the meetings to deliberate and discuss and hopefully make what are very sound. And um sound judgments and recommendations if they are being made to the city council. But I will have to say that for the system to work, we do need to have the public involvement. And it becomes very important because even with the best of intentions by the city. For the city as well as our consultants and us as planning commissioners, things can get overlooked. And I can use a case in study at last month when we had the waterfront. Preservation District on our agenda for discussion. We had some owners of properties who are on the east side of Water Street. Who felt that their property should not be included in the new zone. They brought it to our attention. We deliberated on them and we removed them at that time. From the proposed waterfront development. Um, since the packet came out on Friday uh for this meeting, we've had some owners who. Reside over on Culver, have properties on Culver Street facing, I mean, yeah, Culver front facing properties between Griffith and Butler. That have expressed the same concern that their properties technically are not waterfront, but yet were being included. That may have been an oversight and I can tell anybody who's in the room, if you're in that block. It will be something we will be discussing here this evening as to whether or not that should have been included i- in that district. So these, so the process does work by us putting the packets out. Having the citizens kind of take the time to review the packets, go through the agenda, come in and we will listen. And we do want to try to do in all situations what we think is best for the city, but also has the least harm, you know, for any of the, any of the citizens. So with that kind of put up front, I would then open up public comments tonight. For any items that you would like to come up and speak about that are on the current agenda. With the one preference that when you do come up or you raise your hand on Zoom, you just give us your name, your address and limit your comments to three minutes. If you are planning to make a comment regarding. Your property or your opinion on the waterfront preservation district zoning. I would ask that you wait until the public hearing, which is under new business item number one. Because in the public hearing, there is a public comment section. And we would prefer to have those comments recorded in that section as opposed to in this public comment. Um, but at this time, if anyone would like to come up and. Address us regarding agenda items, you are welcome to do so. And if you're online, please raise your hand. Anyone in the room? No one? Anyone online?
Nothing.
Don't see anyone. So then we will close the first public comments. Which will move us to our one item from. The previous month on our old business, which is one twenty Mary Street, the request to be rezoned from the C two Water Street East. District to R four City Center Residential. Which appears on, I know it's always different because it's the first time we don't have.
H fourteen.
H fourteen. So uh, oh, one of the things I did want to make reference, I think most of the commissioners know, but some of the people who are here or who are online. Ryan Cummings, who is the zoning administrator for the city um had a. Trip planned, a humanitarian trip with his church group. That was already scheduled over a year ago and had no way of being able to reschedule it. So that's why he is not here tonight. He understands the importance of these meetings, the timing is unfortunate because of all the stuff that's on the agendas. But that is why Ryan is not here in our room. We do have our planning consultant, Dave Jurassic, as well as legal counsel here with Jake. And so um regarding the old business on Mary Street. Do we have, I think last month when we had a public hearing. The one thing that we were kind of missing was the applicant is the. She is here, listen. No, I think it was, I think there's some questions kind of came up and that's what kind of led to it. Um, David, I don't know. Do you want me to kind of go through what we did last month or is that something that you, because Ryan would normally kind of catch everyone up on? That. What did this have? My last minute.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, uh, we did hold a public hearing. Uh, it was explained at that time that the applicant is requesting. A rezoning from C two Water Streets to R four City Center. And the um, a city center transitional residential district and uh. We gave you a little bit of history last time that the applicant um i- is seeking to rent the entire dwelling as a short-term rental. And then the long-term uh plan is to establish it as a Ben breakfast uh which would be affiliated with with the Wickwood Inn. Um, at the last meeting, we did walk through um the four standards of approval for rezonings. Uh, the first being master plan compliance, uh, second being uh if the allowed uses within the requested zoning district are compatible with nearby uses. Uh, number three was uh. Whether public services and facilities would be adversely affected by the uses that would be allowable through the rezoning. And then lastly, uh, would the uses be equally or better suited to the area than those under the current zoning district? So. Um, based on my analysis back from the um October thirteenth report, I thought you could make an argument for rezoning. I know there was some concern with. With um this being a kind of be a fracture to the 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 um. The existing line of zoning of um C two Water Streets. Um, the thought was from the, from the staffing consulting perspective that you could uh consider this as as a uh. As close enough to the master plan. It's it's an edge property. Uh, it it's not going to fragments the the zoning map, but it would be a little bit of a cut in into that C two Water Street East. And I know a kind of a consistent zoning boundaries um are important to consider. Uh, but overall, I I was not overly concerned with the the allowable uses uh within the C two Water Street. Uh, east uh for the R four zoning district as opposed to C two Water Street East. Um, I think in that block, especially to the the east and the northeast, you have uh businesses such as the Ben breakfast, you have residential use. As well as uh the the Camp Willow, which are all really kind of residential scale buildings as well. So um. I I know there were some concerns last time and I'm happy to answer questions if uh you'd like to about those four standards of approval.
Sure. Uh, Mister, Mister Chair, if I may, um, would it be a less intrusive and and in terms of setting precedent or not setting precedent, would it be a less intrusive? Uh, manner for the property owners to have proceeded with seeking a variance from the zoning board of appeals? And was that a possibility that they could have first pursued before coming us, coming to us seeking rezoning?
Uh, well, one option could have been a land use variance. Um, the the standards for for either dimensional guarantees or land use variances are are fairly strict. Uh, they're probably stricter than than rezoning standards themselves. Um, you really have to prove that there's a unique circumstance that you you cannot. Uh, carry out a reasonable use of the land. So um I I they did not pursue the the land use variance, uh, but it they may have had a difficult time um. Uh, making the argument for the land experience because there there is a reasonable use of land under either zoning district.
Um. But in terms of if if. We didn't as a a body didn't want to set precedent allowing individual lots to be rezoned because somebody came in and said they want to. Um, and set that precedent um. Wouldn't a a easier or less intrusive in terms of the overall scheme of things be for them to first go to the ZBA? And either get a thumbs up or thumbs down and then come to us for a rezoning.
Uh, it's there, there's not a set process, so one before the other necessarily. Um, I mean, if there if.
Well, there certainly is. If if we rezonate, they don't have to go to the ZBA.
Correct. Uh, but in terms of uh, is there a process that you need to seek a land use variance before rezoning in in really any case, that that's not a prerequisite for seeking rezoning. Uh, it's certainly something that they 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 could have pursued um as as a, as opposed to rezoning the land. Uh, that certainly was an option. Um. I don't know if that that was discussed with with the the city planner or not, but um. Um, in in terms of uh the precedents, uh, this is rezonings are considered on a case-by-case basis against these four standards. So. It's not really a a precedent-setting uh action if we were to rezon this. Um. If someone else came in with something similar, i- it might be treated similarly, uh, but it would have to be very similar circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask, would you um come up to the owner, please? And say your name and so for the record.
My name is Shay Soucy and I'm the owner of one twenty Mary Street.
Nice. And you also own the.
And we, and we also are owners of five ten Butler, the Wickwood.
With Liquid, right?
Yes.
Yeah, just so we have it all on record. When you had purchased the property.
Yep.
One of the question that came up last month and we didn't have anybody to ask was, were you aware? That the property had a, was it zone different than the Wickwood?
Um, when we purchased the property, no. Uh, not necessarily we, and at that time when we purchased it. We weren't sure what we, you know, I mean, it was it, we talked to the owner, it came up, we purchased it and then started thinking about.
How you might want to use it. Okay. Is the intention down the line to incorporate it into?
Yes.
The Wickwood?
Yes.
Would you ever foresee asking for these two parcels to be combined? So that it's on one property.
We haven't, we haven't kind of weighed the differences or if it's more beneficial for the city or not, or.
Or yourselves, I was just, just curious.
Haven't done that analysis yet.
Maybe I also have questions for.
But we would be open to feedback, like if if there's a preference and for what reason? Um, you know, if it's more legal or if it's more.
I was just curious. I mean, I would, I guess it was something that I thought had they been. You know, requested to be combined, then we would have had to have basically kind of the same type of change on the map. Because if we were to combine them and it became part of Wickwood, then it would be in, you know, you the. Um, R four district as opposed to, you know, in its current. Um, so when some people are kind of thinking it's like a carve-out, I'm just looking at saying, well, had they asked for it to be combined. It would have automatically had its zone changed. So if we ever combined them down the road. The map line would also change at that time anyway. So it's another way of just kind of looking at the rationale for it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is only for a year, right? While we do some planning around what that um renovation looks like.
Correct.
I I I'm sorry, what's only for a year?
We're asking for short term, right? We, we want a short-term rental of the property for a year while we've kind of figure out what we want to. Do with the renovation. Do we leave it as a standalone property or do we combine them?
Ah, okay.
Right?
Well, if it's rezoned, it's rezoned permanently, not just for a year.
But it would be rezoned to what, if they combine it, it would be in that other zone.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm saying whether we do it now or whether we wait till it's combined. It's going to end up in a commercial or in the uh, what's it, C R?
R four.
The R four, I'm sorry.
I, and and I'm sorry. You stated as a matter of fact, I I I'm not, I'm not aware that if if the two parcels are combined. How do we know that the Wickwood parcel wouldn't become part of uh Water Street? East. I mean, why does it necessarily become? Part of the liquid property instead of the, I I don't even know why they, if it becomes one parcel. Why it necessarily be is is automatically rezoned. I'm confused on that. What's the basis of that?
Yes, okay. I'm only looking at my experience, which wasn't in Sagatuck, it was only, it was in the city of Chicago. When we had, we had combined parcels. Whichever parcel was the majority, which in this situation, my, that my, my view would be Wickwood. That would become the, that would become the zone if you had parcels that were in two different zones or being combined. I don't know, Jake, if that's how it would work in the city of Sagatuck, but.
I'm, I'm not aware of a provision in the city code that would effectuate like an automatic rezoning. It it seems like just kind of as a matter of course, if you're combining the two. It it would make sense to couple it with the rezoning, but I don't know that I've seen anything in the city code that would, that would function that.
So I I have the same concern I had last month, which is that. Um, you guys were cited for running for the short-term rentals as you've had it. Um, and. So that's. Irritating, you know, for what that is worth. Um, and then to ask for a rezoning to continue. To short-term run it. I I sort of feel like we're. We're backing into giving you a pass on doing something you won't, weren't. So, you know, licensed to do.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Right? Um, we hired a commercial rental company. And asked them and they never brought this to our attention. So we didn't do it to try to sneak. We haven't done anything to try to sneak here. We've, you know, we, we respect. The area and and want to up, you know. Be part of the community. We're not trying to sneak anything. So we were very irritated and. Then went backwards into this. Um, and the intention was only so that we can. Generate some revenue with the rental while we figure out what we do. That was.
So I shift that irritation to them from you.
So sorry, I mean.
But I do, I am, I just, there's something about. Uh, changing our zones for to, for short-term rentals that just. Doesn't sit well with me. Um, but. I'm curious to hear.
Go ahead CJ.
To get my comments out. I'm same as last month. I feel if they meet the standards, their four standards procedure that's within the city, we, we really are just ruling on those rules and. And the. We'll follow the recommendations that are out.
Russ, you had something?
Yeah, I can. Uh, thank you for being this here this, this evening as well. Um, I appreciate the comments of my fellow commissioners. Um, I don't believe that there was any intent to to try to fly under the rules on this. I I think that was just in, this has happened before. Yeah.
I take curve.
Yeah, right. Yeah. And and there've been other situations like this in the past that have happened and and um, you know, it 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 happens. Uh, from my perspective, um, the bigger concern that I have is. And maybe was done a fantastic job. You've done a wonderful job with with what's an iconic structure in the city. Great operation effort, nothing but good things, good neighbor, et cetera. Uh, but as a planner. Uh, the concern is, I really have two concerns. One is that this is a short-term change to accommodate your financial need. And then it says very clearly in here and you mentioned this evening that you're eventually going to convert this to a bed and breakfast establishment, may or may not be physically incorporated into the Wickwood, which is a whole nother. That's a whole nother site plan application and there's going to be a lot of work evolved around that. It could impact this neighborhood greatly. From a building standpoint, it was mentioned by the um David Jurassic is that, and I forget the exact words that were used, is that all the buildings on that block and that area are of um, what was the word that you used, David? How did you describe it?
Uh, residential scale.
Yeah, residential scale. Yeah, thank you. Any combination of this house, which is in my mind, always going to be the back-end house. That's where the beckons. As you know.
Yep.
And if you were to combine that physically with the Wickwood. Goes beyond that scale immediately.
You mean connect it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we wouldn't connect it, but yes.
Whatever, what you, you know, I'm not here to try to help imagine what the plan is going to look like, but my, but my concern is the change in the neighborhood. And from a planning standpoint. The districts are designed to accommodate different uses as well as to have migration between areas, which is, this is right on the, this is a migration spot. Um, the past is the past, uh, you know, things change and sometimes a residential home becomes something other than a residential home. So. The bed and breakfast establishment is something that would have to be thought about in the future, but I'm, but I am a little troubled by having this transitory change in the zone to accommodate a business need. That's, that's essentially where. That's where I've arrived on it.
Russ, I will just tack on, I have a thought that actually dovetails nicely um into your point, which is I'm. Also similarly kind of stuck on this factor four um, which. Says that the uses would be equally or better suited to the area if we change the zone. And as I'm reading the regulations, a bed and breakfast would be a permitted use under R four, but would require a special land use and coming before us under. The existing C two. That does seem like we're permitting to your, it goes to your point, we're permitting a more commercial use effectively, and a more commercial use of the property by allowing the rezoning. We might do that anyway through a special land use. But. It will at least have to go through that process, so.
Can I ask a question? Just as an owner? Um, the property sits between two commercial uses. And everything around it is a commercial use, right? Every, so I'm not sure our intention, I mean, you guys have seen, and I know this is just me talking. But you've seen our care taken with a historic property here. Um, Martin and I come from, I love historic properties. I live in an eighteen ninety-three in Chicago landmarked. Um, our intention is to keep uh the volume of the structure identical to what it is. And just to um, what we've been looking at is just to use it as a separate structure, not to attach it. Um. So I I don't, I I'm just curious because everything around it is commercial and we're not talking about changing the structure. Why? Why there would be concern?
So I have a question probably for Dave. So. Say, for example, we rezoned this and they win a huge lottery. And decide that they're going to move to Paris and sell the property. What could happen due to the rezoning? But I mean, so we know what their plans are, which, you know, it seems. I mean, it sounds like a cool plan. Um, but what could we be committing ourselves to? That could. Um, as a result of this zone change.
Well, and I'm happy to answer that if you don't want to get up, Dave. I mean, the the result would be that the parcel would be zoned R four now. And so it could be developed, and and this is true whether or not they own it.
Right, right.
If they win the lottery, if they sell it, if they, if they keep it.
I was trying to not to throw shade on their plans because I already throw.
Under, understood.
On her once. So.
So the result would be that they'd be able to develop it consistent with any of the uses allowed by right or by special use permit in the R four district. Um, an issue I had, if I may say real quick, is is I was going to ask you if if anybody had advised you. Maybe the zoning administrator here or a private con, private attorney or consultant or the, you had to seek a um. A change in the zoning versus going to the zoning board of appeals and seeking a variance.
The question that you were asking prior.
Yes. So now I'm asking you, did.
Right, we had.
How did you come here for this instead of going to the?
So from, from my recollection. Um, our attorney and the architect that we are working with talked to Ryan and that's how. The, the conversation went. Now, Ryan, I think he's on Zoom, but he can maybe.
Was, I didn't see, I didn't see.
Ryan.
Yeah, I don't think Ryan Cummins is on Zoom.
I think.
Oh, I saw Ryan on the Zoom screen.
I think it's Ryan Highs, our city manager, I'm sorry.
So he may not be here. That's, that's how the conversation went.
I appreciate that. And and the, and the point that I raised, I've I've now reviewed the standards for a variance under the ZBA.
Yeah.
And one of them, which you'd have a real problem with, is that the problem is not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. So I think probably the better way to go. Would be seeking the the change of the zoning than right, trying a a a variance from the ZBA. So.
Okay.
Uh, I think your attorney and architect was, and and Ryan Cummins was probably correct in having you come to.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Correct. And I think Ryan, when I, we were discussing it, I can't speak for him, but was viewing it. That it was the same ownership as your neighboring property, which gave him more of a rationale for why he thought it should just be a rezone. To make both parcels under your ownership, even though they don't have to stay under your ownership, unless, unless you were to combine them.
Right.
And and Mister Chair, if I may make one more comment. Last month, I was concerned about whether we were doing something called spot rezoning.
It's not.
And thanks to our gold Michigan State Extension Service, uh, the circumstances in order to be considered a spot zone. Uh, are that the area is small compared to districts surrounding the parcel in question. The new district allows land uses inconsistent with those allowed in the vicinity. The spot zone would confer a special benefit on the individual property owner. Not commonly enjoyed by owners of similar property. The existence of the spot zone conflicts with the policies in the text of the master plan and the future land use map. I don't think. At least two of those four uh qualify. And so my concerns about whether this was a spot rezoning, I I don't think has been satisfied. And. Um, as Commissioner CJ said, um, it seems as if the the reasons for rezoning have been met. And uh, so I would be now supporting the rezoning.
And I also, I think that, you know, in last month when I was kind of reviewing, there was talk that someone said, well, if somebody up on the hill came and wanted to be rezoned, what, they wouldn't have any justification. It would like, you wouldn't say, okay, we're going to make that. Commercial or allow a commercial to go into a residential zone. This, you know, this, there was rationale as to why this was being brought in in front. So I think that there is, there is merit, you know, to it. Any other comments or deliberation?
I do actually have a, it's more of a question. Um, I just want to make sure I'm educated on everything. I know in this current zone, there can be a short-term rental unit on the second and third floors. I wasn't quite sure what that that meant. Um, does that mean, Jacob, maybe you know what that commonly means that you would, a resident would live on the first floor and then rent out?
I, for retail. I think the intent of that is, so it's, it's for the commercial, yeah. So there'd be a commercial use on the first floor and then. I I think the district regulations would also require, like if you had apartments or something, those would be on the second floor. So that's something. That in my mind is actually intended to advance the commercial character of that zoning district by. Relegating residential uses uh as well as short-term rentals to the second floor.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And it was brought up at last month's meeting that. You know, there are some inconsistencies on permitted uses sometimes within, you know, our zoning, and that would probably be one because when we were looking at. The discussion on Water Street North properties, whether they could be removed from the water. The discussion on Water Street North properties, whether they could be removed from the waterfront preservation district. And could, instead of leaving them as Water Street North, could they be considered, you know, part of Water Street East and then just continue that up? And that was one of the things that in Water Street North, you're allowed short term rental on all floors. But yet in Water Street East, you were only allowed on second and third, you know, so it was a differential that no one could really say why it existed between. You know, two zones are on the same side of one street, but it, it is what the rules, you know, currently uh call for. And as I had mentioned, we're not. Yet up for the task of going through every one of our zones. Uh, that may be an agenda item a year or two from now, but.
I'm sympathetic. I'm direct this question to you. So if this were to be approved, um, are there any precedent concerns?
I, I wouldn't say so. So the zoning ordinance enumerates. Four standards that have to be considered for rezoning. And I mean, the, the process to rezone is something that is in the text of the zoning ordinance. This is a procedure that is intended to be made available. Not just for the, the city to effectuate rezoning, but also for individuals to come and petition the city to have property rezoned. And so with the understanding that every request would be considered on its own merits, and it couldn't be granted unless those four standards were satisfied. I, I wouldn't be concerned about any negative precedent being set.
Okay, Jacob, along, just to dovetail on that, um, I'm imagining if Willow came to us and asked for the exact same rezoning, would we not? Have some precedent we'd be bound by, or would you not see it that way?
The, so, and forgive me, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry, another, like another house, like on that block.
So it, it's a very factual consideration. It depends on, you know, what zoning district it's in, what zoning district it's adjacent to. What kinds of uses are authorized in those zoning districts? What does the master plan say about this area? The, the big thing about rezoning is, is overall, it's going to be consistency with the master plan, and it's going to be about compatibility with adjacent uses.
Right. And I was asking about the exact same fact pattern in terms of. Another property owner on that block in the same zone asking to move to the zone.
I, I guess if, if you would be unable to articulate a good reason why they should be treated differently. Then I think regardless of whether or not, I mean, I mean, if, if you would grant this one, then you should grant that one. Not for the reason that you granted one in the past, but for the reason that that request would satisfy the four standards. So I would think any, any request that satisfies the criteria under the zoning ordinance, and that's, that really is the planning commission's purview to determine whether or not it meets those standards.
Right.
But if a request meets those standards, I, I would say that.
Mm hmm.
You would grant it.
Okay.
One of the reasons that I'm sympathetic and persuaded um is, I mean, the way, I mean, first of all. You've been a really good citizen relative to the Wickwood. Um, and um, this particular property that we're talking about is, it's confusing because it is surrounded by commercial uses. So um, on the other hand, um, I wish this had happened, this kind of conversation had happened a month ago.
I know, I, I didn't realize nobody had said that I need to be here, so I apologize.
It's okay. But anyway.
We appreciate your patience with it too. All right, do we?
Ready?
Have any comments? If we don't have any additional comments, would we, anyone like to make a motion? To approve or disapprove?
Mr. Mayor, uh, I move that the planning commission.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
I just, I just got a promotion.
And it's. And it's still early. Mr. Chair. Um, thank you. Uh, I move that the planning commission, not the city council, our planning commission. Approve the rezoning of the subject lot one twenty Mary Street. From the C two Water Street East District to the R four City Center Transitional Residential District.
A second. With the motion and the second, I will ask the city clerk to call, roll for a vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Broker?
Yes.
Gardener?
Yes.
Bonner?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
Inman?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's been approved.
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
With that. We will move on to the new business. And before opening up tonight's public hearing, which is under the item, public hearing for new business, item A. As I stated earlier, you know, the planning commission takes the responsibility seriously. I know that when I became the chair. Of the planning commission two years ago, I reached out to many people in the community. And inquired what they thought the planning commission could improve, or where they thought the planning commission could improve. And while most people told me they thought the planning commission did a very good job, several expressed the fact that they thought that the planning commission should be a little more proactive versus reactive. In trying to address desires of the city and, and its citizens. And if many of you who are online or in the room might recall, the city then put out a public survey asking what they thought were the biggest concerns. For the city of Sagatuck and its citizens. And two of the results that came back directly related to things that we could look at here in the planning commission, and that was the waterfront preservation and issues related to short term rental. And so for two, twenty twenty-three, after seeing those survey results, the planning commission took it upon themselves to put both of those items on our agenda for twenty twenty-three. I gotta tell you in truth, in hindsight, had we known the workload that each of them were going to pertain to or result in, we may have said, let's do one at a time. But we did put both on the agenda, and here we are now in some of the final stages of looking at each of these, one of which is. You know, kind of in a recommended, recommendation stage, and the other one, we're still deliberating determining what to be recommended. But once again, it's something that I, you know, we, we do appreciate all the involvement from the people, and we are listening to what the community is. And with that, I am going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for an ordinance to amend title. Uh, twenty-five, chapter fourteen of the code of the city of Sagatuck to create a C two down front downtown waterfront preservation zoning district. Potentially eliminate the C two Water Street South zoning district. Amend the various sections of the ordinance to reflect the implementation. Recommendations of the city of Sagatuck waterfront development project and to amend the official zoning map to rezone lands currently zoned Water Street South. Or C two Water Street South and C one Water Street North to the new C two waterfront preservation zoning district. To be able to catch everyone up on the process and when this began and what has occurred during the time of the year, I'd like to invite David to come up to the podium. And kind of share with us, you know, everything that we have done to get to this point, the rationale behind it. And what we are going to be discussing um here this, this evening through this public hearing.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I put together a few slides concerning the uh entire process, our, our schedule, our scope of the process, all of our milestones and, and the recommendations for this evening. So. Um, I have a couple of slides just to give the public a general update of our process. A, as you know, as, as you had recited tonight, this is a, a zoning map and a zoning ordinance amendments text amendment. Uh, but collectively, we've kind of informally called this the waterfront regulations assessment project uh as a whole, as an entire process. And uh, tonight is the official public hearing uh for the uh proposed zoning map and zoning text amendments. Uh, so an overview for tonight, I'd like to touch on the process, a, a quick summary of our public input. Uh, the assessment report, which was prepared ahead of the recommended zoning text, and then an overview of the recommendations. Uh, which are numbered as, as sections within the official ordinance that was provided to you. So the overall purpose of this project was to address concern with incompatible waterfront area development. Uh, to hear from residents and visitors, uh, to implement the city's master plan and to draft new zoning language to implement this project. Uh, next page, please. So our process, uh, this has been about seven months in the making at this point. Uh, we began in April. Uh, we had a kickoff meeting and talked about the general project scope. Uh, we talked about the milestones, our goals, objectives, and, and how we were going to involve the public in this process. Um, May and June, then, we worked on the design of, of two different surveys, a, a visual, a visual preference survey as well as a, a general community survey uh on this topic. Uh, then July, it was really our, our public inputs, um, a time of the process. Uh, we had these, both surveys opened, I, I believe about a month for both of those. And then we had a community, uh, various community events where we had volunteers from the planning commission uh. Man a table. Uh, we had multiple boards for public interaction. And, and one of the goals of that was to really just let people know about the project and let them know that there are surveys online and that this project is in the works. And we wanted to hear from, from residents and visitors as well. Uh, July was when I presented the assessment report. Uh, so we, uh, at that time summarized the public inputs. Um, we had a, a, a character review of the study area, um, talked about the zoning ordinance and, and some initial recommendations. Uh, and then August, September, October, we really uh dove pretty deep into the zoning recommendations. And uh, we'll touch on that a bit in a couple of slides here. And then November now, we are at the official public hearing in time and the review of the formal draft. Uh, next slide, please. So first off, the public events and display boards. Um, this is the first of the three boards that we had available. Uh, this was really kind of an overview board, just so someone could walk up and check out our, our station, uh, read a little bit about what we were doing and why. Uh, the next slide is the um, really a, a priority uh exercise. So is, what, what are the most important topics to study during this project? And I, I believe the different colors had to do with, with whether they are a residence visitor in, or um, I, I would call the exact color on, on that one, but um. Uh, they were, they're concerning if you're a residence visitor or part time resident, I believe.
It was green if you're the resident. Or, I mean, blue is resident, green was if you're in the community, and red is if, if you're a visitor.
And so this was really just, uh, we, we talked about a, listed a couple of main uh project area. Um, areas of study, and uh, the ones that came out on top are the, the looking at public space, green spaces, uh, assessing the scale, height with the buildings. And then forth there, the sidewalks and outdoor seating. So those really came out, uh, really, a, as we expected, uh, the, the public inputs really reinforced that. Uh, then the next slide was really to give kind of a, a taste of the uh visual preference survey, which we had online. So. Uh, we just had a, a, a smaller selection of buildings on, on this board, um, ten buildings, whereas in the uh actual uh survey online, we had twenty-five buildings. So. Here, we, we were asking participants, you know, do you prefer this building or do you not? And for Water Street uh. Versus Park Street. So uh, we, we had some, some variations there, you know, is this okay for this side of the river versus this side? You know, do you prefer this building? Do you not? Um, in any case, is there any part of this building do you, do you prefer? I mean, it could be something about a landscaping that they like, but the building itself they don't like. So. Uh, we gave the opportunity in the online survey to, to respond to a number of other um follow-ups to the image itself. Uh, next board. Okay, then uh, the waterfront survey, then, uh, we had three hundred and ten participants. Um, seventy-six were full time or part time residents. Uh, their favorite activities were dining, events, walking and biking in, in these waterfront areas. Um, really kind of reinforces what was said on the other slide uh with the boards. Uh, the most important aspects of waterfronts of these folks uh were access, pathways. Uh, views and open space along the waterfront areas. Uh, the focus, which, which uh, was the priorities of those who participated, uh, that they really supported incentives to provide public uh open space and access. Uh, to the waterways, uh, and to control the scale, height and width of buildings. So really, this was really the, the, kind of the basis for some of the, the zoning recommendations that are, they're in the packet tonight. Um, and in terms of buildings, uh, two and a half stories maximum was what was uh really the, the, the majority of folks who responded said no higher than two and a half stories. Uh, no front yard or onsite parking, um, and uh less, there's actually, what was a little bit surprising was there's less interest in the architectural features and building materials. So. Um, we did have a discussion with the uh historic uh district commission as well, and, and they felt that, that, that was really a lot in their purview as well, that they, they should have. Um, you know, and they do have the review of, of most of these areas is within the, the historic uh. Uh, the overlay district. So um, it, it was uh because of that um input, as well as the input from the HDC, uh, we, we have. Really let, no requirements concerning building materials and, and, you know, specific architecture design. We're going, we're going to defer the HDC on that issue uh for the areas within the district. Uh, next slide, please. So the visual preference survey, so this was a separate survey altogether, um, about the same amount of participants, uh, two hundred and ninety-three. Seventy-five percent were full time or part time. So, so really, uh, probably, probably a lot of the same folks who responded to their survey responded to this one. Um, as I mentioned before, there were uh twenty-five total images with, with various buildings of, of different size, scale, shape, design. Um, and overall, seven of those were preferred for Park Street and eight were preferred for Water Street. And of the buildings that were, were preferred, uh, probably those common elements of those buildings, when I studied them, were, they were smaller scale. They were one or two stories. A lot of them had more of the horizontal clapboard pitched roofs, and, and they were a more traditional style. So obviously, we're not getting into, to architecture a lot, but it, it just, it was a more uh traditional style of building that was preferred by participants. Uh, the, the common elements of buildings that were not preferred were, were, were taller buildings, uh, two to five stories were, were shown in those examples. Uh, there's a, a, a wide range of siding and building materials. Uh, a lot of these also, also had flat roofs. So some of them were more modern design or more kind of a Main Street design even with, with flat roofs. And, and that was really not a, a, not a lot of great comments about that, those types of roofs, but more the pitched roof traditional design buildings. Um, and, and it's just a, um, why these were more modern, but there were some traditional buildings that were, that were um also not preferred based on uh the characteristics of those photos. Next slide, please. Okay, so uh, based on the public input, uh, our initial discussions at the planning commission level. And survey results, uh, we prepared a, an assessment report which was presented in July. Uh, and the first thing we did is we looked at the character of the area. So we wanted to understand the um. The architecture, uh, water access, bicycle, pedestrian accommodations, building frontages, where parking was located and water view. So. It was important to have a, a good grasp of the area that we are going to create regulations for on, on both sides of the river. Um, and we also did a, a, a rough um development potential, kind of a redevelopment analysis of, of how much land. Uh, could we see being developed from, from an undeveloped state or, or areas where there, there were aging buildings that could be uh demolished and redeveloped? So on the east side of the river, uh, we had, um, well, total between both of them, we had about seven and a half acres, and that was. You know, of that, about a third of that, uh, I figured had a higher likelihood of, of development or redevelopment. Uh, on the east side, we have about, uh, my opinion, about almost two acres of, of area that is either uh parking lots or, or a very old buildings that could easily be redeveloped. Or vacant land, uh, that, so almost two acres that probably has a pretty high uh, uh, potential for development or redevelopment. On the west side, a little bit less, and that was primarily the, 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 the Casa Loma Marina area, which, which could potentially be redeveloped. Uh, it's certainly underutilized uh. From what, what could happen there uh under the current zoning. So uh, we, it's, it's not a significant size study area, but it's an important study area. It, it's, it's an area that's a priority to your business, visitors, residents, and your elected officials and your appointed officials. Um, concerning zoning, then, um, our thought was at that time that the current zoning on the books just will not ensure consistency. Uh, with the city's master plan, and it may result in some developments, um, scale, bulk or size, or look that is just not uh compatible with, with what. Uh, we hear uh is, would be more appropriate for this study area. Next slide, please. So at that time, uh, we, we, as I said, we had about uh three months worth of, of discussions at the planning commission level. Uh, we talked a little bit about architecture, but, but uh, we're going to defer the HDC on that. Uh, we talked about land use regulation, parking, lot size setbacks, building width, lot coverage, open space. Uh, heights. Um, and then we looked at, uh, you know, what types of, of, how are we going to regulate by zoning district? Uh, we had a, a conversation about, you know, creating a new district, combining districts, creating an overlay district. Um, and even having a, a mandatory planned unit development over the entire study area that really would have given us probably the most uh, uh, authority over future development, most uh. But we felt that that was a little bit of overreach and, and we weren't really comfortable with that. Uh, so we do have a, a, a voluntary PUD option built in, but the, these were a lot of the zoning type. Uh, options that we discussed over the, over the months uh before uh preparation of the, the final recommendations uh for this evening. Uh, next slide, please. So um, on to the, the ordinance that you have in front of you, uh, the one that was online. Um, it, it is broken out into several sections. And in each section, um, when, when you look at the official ordinance formats, it, it's really kind of the, the list of, of how we are going to update the book itself. So. It would say section one, we are going to replace this in the table contents, section. Section two, we are going to add these definitions. Section three, we are going to reclassify this to that. So it's almost like a list, it's almost a to do list of what we would do to the zoning ordinance. Within the packets, probably one of your longer packets, because we have the entire zoning ordinance in it. We also had the changes tracked based on the proposed language, just so that you could see how it fit into the entire ordinance. Last time it was a little confusing, I apologize for that, that we were only looking at selected pages. So now you'll be able to see exactly how these fit into the entire ordinance. Even though this is, we're only probably addressing about five percent of the text and words with this project, it's good to see where exactly fits in. So just a quick summary, I'm sure we'll have questions on all these as we go through this tonight. But section one, just the table contents provisions. Section two, we are now regulating building width maximum setback, maximum setback. And regulating by half story as well. So we wanted to make sure that all those were defined in our definitions chapter as well. Because if we're going to say that there's a maximum setback for something, someone needs to know what the heck that means. So we have these definitions in section two. Section three concerns the C four resort district. I believe at our last meeting, the recommendation was at least to consider pushing the the remaining uses that were permitted in C four. Under the special land use list. So I believe it's only short term rentals and bed breakfasts that were then proposed to be pushed from permitted uses to special land uses. In C four. And we'll certainly talk about this, but with with the special land use process, you have a greater discretionary review authority. Over land use and site development. Section four is considering the dimensional requirements, and this is for C four. We have the two point five story maximum. In the sixty percent building width, so sixty percent of the the building. Sixty percent of the lot width can be your, the maximum building front inch. So it provides some controls, you have controls for side setbacks as well as building width. So it provides a really way to control the scale in the overall. You know, bulk of the building in this district as well as the other districts. Okay, next slide please. Then section five is really probably the the most significant change, which is the new proposed zoning district, which is C two. Downtown waterfront preservation district. And toward the end of this, the ordinance, so we list all the addresses which would be potentially rezoned. From C two Water Street, C two Water Street North and Water Street South. To the new C two downtown waterfront preservation district. And I think just, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I think it is important to understand, to read the intent statement. This district is intended to manage and regulate development redevelopment projects to ensure views of the Kalamazoo River and do encourage. And incentivize access to its shoreline. Development redevelopment projects that complement and enhance the waterfront are envisioned for this area. So that's really been really the theme of this entire project. The objective then are to connect the community to the waterfront. So if it's just not necessarily allowing people, the public to walk on the private property, I mean, we would encourage that. Hopefully incentivize that, but at least to have some use of the waterfront from the public right away from from the downtown area. So that you know that we're, this is a waterfront community. Provide opportunities for recreation, recreation access. We want to preserve the existing character. Promote compatible attractive redevelopments and to establish requirements to ensure that these objectives have been met. Next slide please. So within this new zoning district, we have a number of dimensional requirements. They do vary north and south of Francis, north and south of Francis. That is actually the dividing line between Water Street North and Water Street South. So although it's it's one combined district, we do have varying standards, whether you are north or south of Francis. So we have front setbacks and usually setback is what we do to push a building away from the public right away. We've also, we've added in front setbacks for for the districts. As well as as a maximum setback. So we're saying you need to be a reasonable way away from the the public right away. But we don't want you all the way back. We want to push you, really, it's what we call a build to area, which is between minimum and maximum front setback. Side setbacks, so we have added side setbacks in places where where side setbacks are currently not required. But we actually built in some flexibility with this so that we're not just saying that you need ten feet on both sides north of Francis. We're saying twenty feet total and there's some flexibility in how you can shift your building. And how you shift your building might be, you know, there might be a. On a street end, for example, where there could be, you could maximize on the view with the street end and twenty foot setback on one side of the property. And that could be something that could certainly be a more attractive project. But it gives a developer some some flexibility to consider how that building is placed in the property, rather than just saying it's got to be right in the middle. You can you can shift a little bit to provide some flexibility. Maximum stories is two point five. I think it was important to have that definition for the half story, because you've seen some buildings, even some of the city that are are two and a half stories. But based on their significant dormer width, it's essentially a three story building. And when you have a dormer or multiple dormers that are over fifty percent of that that. That third floor, it really becomes a kind of a bulky three story building. So we added in the two point five. Story requirement as well as define that half story so that it is a, you know, no more than fifty percent of that upper floor. And no more than fifty percent dormers along the group line. Parking, we we suggested that parking is behind the front side of the building. Lot coverage is remained unchanged. We don't have a maximum lot coverage for North Francis. We haven't addressed it in C four resort. And we have not. We have not also changed lot coverage for the area south of Francis, so that'd be a Water Street South area currently. But we do build in in the P U D section later, that there are some incentives to to exceed that lot coverage. If you meet the the goals of the P U D section is to provide views and in some level of public access would be an incentive. To to. To waive a certain amount of that lot coverage. We have garage loading area restrictions, so loading areas, obviously, we don't want to see those on the front of buildings. Parking lot locations, side and rear buildings. We have a really kind of a minimal usable open space requirement. And this could be met even for rooftop, rooftop area of the building, even private balconies to a certain extent. But this allows for some level of usable open space. It doesn't mean that it has to be public access. It can be privately used by by the owner, but it 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 really improves the quality development when there's. Some level of useful open space beyond just a paved parking area or store. You know, a paved area and a setback or so on. So it has a minimal level of useful open space that that can be met. On on the structure or balconies, or it could be green space or landscaping just on the property inside. So usually it's, it's seen that that's usable open space, so it certainly increases the value of property and and in the overall quality of that development. Next slide please. So section six then is to. The ideas would be to strike the C two Water Street South District entirely. Strike reference to the C two Water Street South District in section seven. I think section seven is actually concerning the, I think it's the service of alcohol beverage section, I believe. But it's just, it's really just a reference. So there were a couple of references. I had to word search documents, make sure that we are getting rid of C two Water Street South. We have to get rid of it in all sections. So that that was one of them, section seven. Section eight, as I mentioned before, we're pushing a lot of the uses in. In C four resorts, in C two waterfront preservation district to special land uses. So with that, all special land uses in the city, we have have a set of general standards. For you to consider as part of your discretionary review authority for special land uses. We have a supplemental set of standards concerning design and aesthetics and waterfront protection. As right now proposed for C two as well as the waterfront locks in C four. And then. Moving on then is to plan unit developments. I touched on this a little bit earlier. We really incentivize that public access, whether it is a just like open space, park space that or. Could be outdoor restaurant space that's open to the public. Or it could be as as. As extreme and beneficial as probably as a, you know, could be a cooperative effort to solve a boardwalk, for instance. To connect to other properties. But that, we want to incentivize those types of things through the planned unit development process. And we include those parameters for for granting those zoning modifications. To be able to incorporate project, project elements that implements the goals of this plan and the master plan. Section fourteen concerns the parking exemptions, so we had to delete C two Water Street South and then add the new zoning district. And then lastly, section fifteen is to. All parcel numbers and addresses that would be subject to the rezoning. So we have several in Water Street North and several in Water Street South that are proposed to be the new waterfront preservation zoning district. And then a portion of Water Street North, as we discussed last time, on the east side of Water Street is going to remain there. So I may have inadvertently mentioned that we were getting rid of Water Street North. Just want to clarify, on the west side of Water Street, there's a few parcels on the east side of Water Street, Water Street North. That will remain zoned that way. Next slide please. Okay, our next steps, we have a couple of things we can do this evening. Obviously, we're going to hear from the public. After that, we could continue our work and assessment of these options. We could do that this evening. You could, you could vote to to carry this conversation on in their next meeting. But whenever we are ready, the planning commission would make a recommendation to the city council. City council will then review your recommendation and ultimately they would take action on the recommendations.
David, thank you. I think that's very good because sometimes we hear from the citizens. You know, why are you, they forget why we were doing this, what's the justification to it? And I think it clearly shows that there was something we were asked to kind of take a look at. We've looked at all the different features and we tried to come up with something that we think is the best for everyone who's currently property owners. As well as what we really want the waterfront to look like as the community continues to move forward over the coming years. One question I do have for you before we go to the public comment section of this public hearing. As we had referenced earlier. If we determine that the parcels that are facing Culver Street. Which are non waterfront properties. If we wanted to exclude those. That would mean changes to what you just went through, because we would keep Water Street South for the time period with those parcels in it, correct? And we would remove those parcels from like in our, in our packet on page twenty eight and twenty nine where we list all the parcels. Those parcels would be removed.
That's correct. If the planning commission did decide to make a recommendation, but to carve that area out for now to deal with at a later date. We would remove addresses, parcel numbers from section fifteen zoning map. And then we would have to just walk through page by page to to. Puts the the where we're suggesting to strike certain, well, the district, Water Street South in its entirety as well as those references. We would simply remove those from from this particular draft ordinance to move forward to council. So it could easily be done. If you want to hold back on that particular component and that block, we could keep Water Street. South intact for the time being, and then at a later date, if you decide so, we could eliminate that district or recommend that it's struck. Based on a future conversation.
Right. So all the references in here where we say that Water Street South would be combined, it'd be like similar Water Street South. All properties in Water Street South are on the waterfront. Would be combined with all waterfront properties from Water Street North. It's not the full districts going away. Both districts would currently still exist. We just have to revise what's in the. Kit that we'd be recommending. If that's where we're decided to go.
You could just strike a few sections, and we can certainly take a look at that before you move forward with any recommendation. But we'd strike a few sections as well as the addresses and parcels for those on that on that subject.
Have any questions at this time for David before we move to public comment? Thank you, David. Appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comments regarding. This. Ordinance. And it's a potential recommendation. If you would like to come up in the room, just come forward, give us your name, your address. And limit your comments to three minutes. If you're online, just please raise your hand and we will try to recognize you. But at this time, if there's anyone in the room that would like to address. This commission, please come forward. Good evening.
I'm from Sergeant Marina, thirty one Butler Street. I'm representing the forty seven owners and also the board. They've asked me to come and speak to this. We're definitely opposed to this. We feel that it's kind of a continuation of what was in place, the moratorium that was in place before. As just a small part of it, but we would definitely recommend that this be passed on. Or we're open to some further explanation of what he had just gone through. That's what I was asked to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Good evening, Carl Gabriel's attorney in Holland, Michigan, on behalf of another, of a number of owners, including seventeen. Seven sixteen Water Street, seven twenty Water Street, five twenty eight Water Street, five oh five Water Street and some others. The city's desire to regulate the waterfront is certainly understandable. And I appreciate the desire to be proactive. However, this goes way too far. If a different version of the ordinance was described as overreaching, this is not. Any better. I hate to have seen what that was. I mean. How many police stations, post offices and electrical substations do we need along the waterfront? Is that is the only permitted use that this district allows. A property owner to put in without the discretionary approval of the people that sit in these seats. That's not a needed use along the waterfront. That's a placeholder, so it doesn't say you can't do anything without our approval. That's the only reason it's there. Every use for those properties is subject to the discretionary approval. As described by your planner, by the people that are sitting in these seats. This is telling the owners of their private property. That you don't trust them to develop the property. We've talked about, you know, the rezone and and those uses that are permitted within this zone and this zone. And if you rezone it, well, then they can do everything that's permitted by right. That's how zoning is supposed to work. You decide this is commercial, you decide this is residential, that you decide this is industrial. And property owners are given some leeway to develop their own personal private property. Not to have to come in if they want to do anything. Other than an electrical substation, a police station or a post office to get your approval. And the zoning ordinance proposed does not shy away from what it's going to take to get that approval. It says so right there. You give up some of your private property. And make it public. And we might approve your your development. That's what it says. It's understandable that the, that the surveys come back with access to the waterfront as being of something of interest. We get that. People love the waterfront. That's what a huge aspect of living here in West Michigan. But that doesn't come. At the detriment to private property owners' rights to their own property. Access is provided by the parks. The docks. The other public ass access points. It's not conditioning the right to develop your own property. By giving up some of it. For that reason. The owners that I represent are extremely opposed to this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Is there anyone online? Not see any online. I believe we had a couple of correspondences that have been handed out, that we just want to make record. That could not be in attendance. That could not be in attendance. Um. One from Jim and Sharon Dewey at seven twenty six Water Street and one from. Bubbles and Spoon, Richard Williams, Cindy Kendall at two forty one Culver Street. Or Krista Kendall, sorry. Um. And these have been made available to us and are part of the packets. One, just giving out some of the rationale as we can have heard from others regarding revising the. Current lot sizes and limits. Um. And then the other one saying that they were okay with the rezonation change.
And, uh, I'm just referencing the communication from Jim and Sharon Dewey. They've asked if we brought Brad at the meeting. Should we accommodate that? Commissioners, don't mind.
You would like to read, please?
This is from Sharon Dewey on Thursday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty three at three thirty two P M regarding Water Street North and South. Please enter and read the following as Sartek Planning Commission meeting, November sixteenth, twenty twenty three. We feel the proposed uses for Water Street North and South are overbearing and burdensome for many properties. A. Revising current lot size requirements and setbacks that have been enforced and functioning for many years. B, possibly lowering some property values and creating financial hardships. C, these proposals appear to be authored by a consultant or one with a limited knowledge of the area and is part of the district. D, we feel these changes as presented without further explanation only invite more legal challenges to the city's tax affairs. Jim and Sharon Dewey, seven twenty six Water.
Thank you.
And, uh, Chairman Mans, I'm not seeing the Kendall correspondence. Was that? Am I missing it?
Was sent.
Was it emailed?
It was Wednesday, November fifteenth. And it just, it was sent to Brian.
Okay, I see.
And it didn't make the packet. And it just said pursue it to Sagatuck's public notice received by the property ownership forty one Culver Street. Please add this correspondence to record. For the scheduled planning commission meeting as the proposed section one fifty four, that thirty eight C. Six and C fifteen is written regarding short term rentals and first. For apartments, we support the change of our property at three four, two forty one Culver Street from Water Street South to the downtown waterfront preservation district.
Okay.
Those were the corresponds that we have received. Is there others in the room? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm I'm Mike Johnson. I own, uh, Coral Gables as well as, uh. Three, three nine nine Park Street, my home. And, uh, first of all, I'd like to say, uh, I completely agree with everything Carl said. I'll have to give Randy a couple bucks for that, but, you know, I really do. I think the man spoke so well and so eloquently about. Us, the landowners, I mean, if. If we, within reason, need to be able to do what we want to do as long as we keep the green space, keep, uh, the water where you can see it. Uh, we need to be able to do what we want to do with that property within reason. Another thing I wanted to ask is how, I don't know if you can answer this, but. For example, if a tree would happen to fall on my roof. At Coral Gables or at my home, could I repair it? Could I, would I, how would I, what would I have to do to get the tree out of the roof?
Um, typically during public comment, we don't address the questions, but.
So you don't want to?
I don't, I mean, if a tree fell, I don't know how that would affect.
Well, the the way.
Current zoning or.
We have to, how would we rebuild it if we, if we can't, we can't. We'd have to build it exactly the way it was before. Is that what you're saying, gathering?
I think what the chair is saying that our procedure for public hearings, both here and with city council, and probably sure you're very well aware. Is that answers, comments are made. Uh, there there is not a back and forth between those making comments and the council.
I'm new in town, so I didn't know. I didn't know how you wrote these meetings go.
Appreciate it.
That's why I thought you might. Uh, willing to understand.
I do. I said. I take it. But it's it's a point we'll, we can cover it in our deliberation. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Craig Smith. I'm from three one one five Cassidy Road, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Um, CEO for Redwater Group, and we happen to own and manage Butler. Um, I I find this, uh. Very strange in terms of the whole approach we're trying to take and controlling the land. The land that's owned by people on the waterfront. I agree with Evan Carles said also. Um, we bought into this town three years ago, thinking we had some great properties. We were told very sternly. We had to keep the waterfront open. We had to keep the boardwalk open. We had to take care of it. We had to make sure people could have access to it all the time, which we've done. Now we find we want to have some of our land taken away. You say, no, we're not taking your land away. Well, of course you are. We want to develop now some of our land along the waterfront. We can't develop as much of it now as we could before because it's more restricted. We're going to say, oh, we have to have more views of the water. We got a hundred percent view of the water. All the way from that end of the boardwalk to this end of the boardwalk, a hundred percent view. But we're going to take our land away, land that we paid for, land that had value, land that we could do something with, and now we can't do anything with it. Because it's so restrictive. So I I don't understand it whatsoever. Um, we've had conversations with the city about the last year and a half, and all we hear is. Uh, we can't talk to you about that. Can't talk to you about that. And now you come out with this that is just so restrictive. If this were your land that you bought, you bought four acres here in town three years ago. You had a house sitting on one acre. You had three acres left of it. You'd plan to do something with it. And then the city came along and said, you know what? You can do something with it, but only half of it now. The other half's got to sit vacant. We want you to take the trees down. We want woods there. How would you feel about the value of land? How would you feel about what you bought into? How would you feel about what you got and how the city is treating you as a business owner and as a partner? And as some of you try to respond to when they make requests. Such as keeping the boardwalk open and repaired, making sure people can walk it, make sure people can have fun on it. I don't think you'd like it with your land. I don't think this, the owners in this room like it with their land. I certainly don't. I think you should think about it because I think it's very restrictive. It's going the wrong direction. I'd like to know, and you can't answer this, I understand that. How many owners of the of the pieces of land did you talk to in this whole process? I never got contacted. We never heard from anybody about this saying, what, what are your thoughts? Anybody here, anybody here from the city about, hey, owners, what do you think about this? Nobody contacted any of us. Are you kidding me? But we talked to people that come here three times a summer and say, hey, give us your opinions on survey. Tell us what you think about how we should have. Oh, yeah, we want to see the waterfront. We come here. We'll walk the boardwalk. You can see all you want. But no, you don't talk to any of us and have all our heart and soul, hard work, value, ownership, cost. Development we put in here to make a living, to help support the city, not just for us. This supports the city, supports people coming here. And no one came to talk to any of us. Did you say? So I'm just saying, I think this is way out. Let's talk to the people that come here a couple of days a week, a couple of times a year, but let's not talk to people that live here, invest here, want to make this a better place. I don't understand it. My three minutes are up, I'm sure, but I don't support it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ruth Johnson at, um, three nine nine Park Street. My husband has Coral Gables, two twenty Water Street. Thank you for the work you do. I know it's difficult and it's always tough. So thank you. We appreciate it and we appreciate. The preservation part of it, or at least I do. I think what my husband was saying is we have a historical building over a hundred and some years old. That if something happened to it, for instance, a gable or a roof line. We want to be able to build it back the way it was, not stay within the limits of what is out there, uh, being posed. That's what he was saying. It is, are historical buildings respected enough to be able to do that with this plan? That's what he's asking. That's what we want to make sure we can do. Okay?
Thank you. Online, I see Ethan. You'd like to unmute?
Yep, yep. Yeah, thank you. Ethan Barty, um, owner of, uh, several properties in in Sagatuck. Um, I I just agree with a lot of the other speakers, um. To limit, um, what a private owner can do with their property, whether it's on the waterfront. Or whatever, uh, by who's sitting in those seats. You know, those seats do change. So from year to year, it's going to depend on what you can do. Um, you know, I think there needs to be ordinances that are put in place that are reasonable. So when people go sell their property. You know, they know what they're selling. The the people know what they can do to develop it, uh, so we can get some money into this town to rebuild it, you know, uh. As as time goes on and as. You know, people want to develop our wonderful city. We've got some wonderful parks. We have a wonderful, uh, dinghy dock. Amazing things that have been done by the city to provide public access to our property. But now you're saying that, you know, me walking down the street, I have to be able to see the water, um, through private property. Uh, it it doesn't, doesn't make any sense to me. If I want to see the property, I can go to Wicks Park. I can go to Coughlin Park. You know, there, there are, there are a lot of places I can go. I can walk in the dunes. We have a wonderful. Um. Town and we need businesses. We need businesses that want to put money and and develop, uh, with with taste. So. Um, for it to be limited on, you know, who's sitting where and when. It it to me, I'm not an attorney, but to me, it just, it seems, it it seems illegal and it seems wrong. And I mean, I am like totally against it. I guess if I were selfish, I would say I'm for it. I'm going to run for city council. Then I have an opportunity to tell Mike Johnson what he can do with this property or not, and I don't even own it. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments from the room or online? Not seeing any. Whoops, one more in the room?
My name is Holly Engel. I'm a resident at three one seven one Light Postway in Sagatuck. In full transparency, I'm a board member for the Kalamazoo Harbor Lake Authority Board, but I'm not here today on behalf of that. I'm here on behalf of my family. And best chance charter is located at three fifty Water Street. We are a fourth generation fishing family. This goes further into just our business, but every business along Water Street. So here I am to say, your math, I am a mathematical person, so, um, you indicate, you know, there's seventy five percent of. The survey you took was the residents. There's eight hundred and seventy three people in the city of Sagatuck. Your survey indicated approximately three hundred people surveyed, of which seventy five percent are residents, which would equate to two hundred and twenty five percent residents. Of your total population, eight seventy three. That's twenty five percent. You never once approached us as business owners and yet. In full diversity, we bring over a million dollars just in our fishing industry to this community. We fund the whole salmon in the classroom project. We give back a hundred fold. I mean, you you can go into Oktoberfest, Fall Fest, Salmon in the Classroom, Tri, not just even City of Sagatuck, but as a tri-community. We're here and this is kind of like a blow in the face. You know, it's it's hard as a business owner when we invest and give back and give back and continually try to promote our tourist industry, which we make our living, or my family does. Pretty much April through September, and now you're trying to restrict it from us without even giving us proper notice. I don't feel that's fair. So I appreciate what you guys are trying to do proactively. We just would like that you keep your. Lane in a, in more sense, just, you know, be transparent with us and serve the people that live here, not just people that come to visit. We are your guys' community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room or online? Seeing nothing online, no one else in the room, then we will close the. Public comment section of this public hearing. At this point, we'll have debate amongst the commissioners as we will kind of discuss what has been proposed, as well as what we have heard here this evening. Um. So there's a lot. What we've kind of heard. I think, you know, and David, you can always feel free to chime in on something new, Jake. The. Question about, you know, taking someone's property or. Restricting the businesses is is never the intention, and I don't think it is the intention of anything that's been drafted. You know, even for us to, um, deliberate on. Thank you. The intention is that we, for many of the properties, like on Water Street, or the south of Francis. There is no changes to the lot coverage, zoning setbacks, um, from what it has been zoned currently. And there's just been minor changes to those properties that are north of Francis Street. And say that they would have to have some minimum setbacks that so where you couldn't have a hundred percent coverage of a lot. Which would make sense for a city that puts says that they value their waterfront. And so a lot of the things when it came to putting any type of setbacks, that's very typical of any city you go to. That have maximum lot coverages as well as setbacks for your side and front and rear. And that's primarily what is included in a lot of. The Water Street, in my opinion, of what we were trying to do with the waterfront. The fact that, you know, I guess it comes up as to the permitted uses and having all permitted uses be a special land use. Was more giving an avenue, and David, you could kind of address this, was given an avenue that if someone felt that they would like to. Develop it in a way that would be different than what is allowed within the existing ordinance. They would have the opportunity through a special land use application to make their case for why it would be allowed not to. Adhere to the setbacks of things that were part. Is that correct, Dave?
Uh, well, yes, uh. The the idea was that this is a, this area that's special with centimeter, that's a resource sensitive, um, community resource. The idea was that, uh, we we could have treated this as an overlay district, which was put on that special land designation. Goes to to maybe a little district, um, but they are special land uses to have that extra level of of authority. Um, it does not say at all that you have to, um, preserve land or put away land for some sort of public use. That is certainly not, uh, one of the supplemental, uh, special landing standards. Uh, it's incentivized through the P U D process, because that's an important policy area. Uh, but but overall, I, yes, I mean, it's, this is an area where we thought that if if development is not done in a manner that's sensitive to the waterfronts or sensitive to. Neighbor properties, uh, it could be something that's that's detrimental. You know, so that's why we had designated, um. Uses as special. The other option you could do is you could allow for for scaling back set of uses that are that are permitted by rights. That that's another option, too. That's something we must look at, but. After considering threshold at that point, you can be like, permitted in special land use, maybe in terms of size building or. You you could certainly look at that if that if that is a concern. Otherwise, uh, you could show it as it is. And if because of the study, because of looking into it, um, feel that this area does warrant, since the address special, increase list.
I would tend to agree. I think the. Special land use, if they fell within the setbacks, again, no one's taking any property. No one's saying you have to make it public, correct? Because all we're saying is that you would have minimum setbacks on sides or front and rear. And yes, that would mean that you would not be able, if you were on Francis Street or going north, you would not have the ability to build lot line to lot line. Is. What the waterfront preservation district is basically saying, but every, everything else from Francis Street South. As far as limitations on coverage and setbacks is the same as what has been in existence for Water Street South, correct?
Um, the setbacks, the, I believe, the, the. I can walk through these one for you just to.
I'm trying to pull it up right now myself.
That's helpful.
Add on a setback. So that's, that's because of the depth and size of those lots. As opposed to those north of Francis, we added in a twenty foot front setback. The maximum, a minimum twenty and a maximum forty. In the side setbacks, it went, they went to ten, from ten feet to forty feet between two sides. So there was, there is an increase in setbacks, fronts and sides of the area of south Francis currently water. Lot coverage remains the same, rear setback remains the same, waters front setback remains the same. Building height remains the same aside from building height as, as it is measured, as stay the same throughout the entire city. It's just in a, in a full three story, it must be good to have.
The lot coverage remains the same. It's just the, there's some differences in the front setbacks and the side setback requirements. But in most of those parcels, they were large enough, and we looked at each individual parcel that if you maintain the coverage ratio, which has always been in place of the forty five percent, you would have even more open space than what is the, we're being required as a minimum based upon the existing size of the average parcel in that area.
Yes, it's great. Water Street South areas, south of Francis, forty five percent maximum lot coverage. That's a pretty significant requirement that's in place now. So you are going to give up that land, whether it is just open space or setbacks one way or the other. It's just a way that forty five percent is, is a strict lack of requirement for an urban downtown area, which
That's what I'm saying. That's, that's, that's in place and we did not change that. So with the majority of those lots, they would have with a forty five percent lot coverage, they would have more than what we're saying is the minimum that they would be required to have with the new waterfront preservation district for everything from Francis Street South. If we had a smaller lot that was ever sold and a smaller lot became available, which would be the minimum size of sixty six hundred feet, then you were then having a forty five percent maximum lot coverage, then you would probably be buddied up against those setback minimums. Questions? Liberation thoughts? Yeah, yeah. And again, it's
Mr. Chair, a, a couple of questions or comments. One, I'm going to direct these to the city attorney and if you don't go for any number of reasons that you want to answer any of these questions at this moment, I perfectly understand.
Certainly.
Um, one, buildings that are currently in these districts are grandfathered in as they are currently constructed. Is that correct?
That is correct. Zoning only works prospectively, not retroactively. So everything that exists now would become lawfully non-conforming to the extent it doesn't conform with the new regulations. It can continue to be used and exist as it sits.
It has been alluded to by the attorney who stood up representing various property owners without using the term illegal taking. It struck me without compensation. It struck me that that's basically what he was saying. If we institute setbacks for future property owners, you have an opinion whether that would constitute an illegal taking without constitute, without compensation for a current property owner?
Sure. So there's two different kinds of takings. There is a, a physical taking where the government actually takes title to the property and requisitions it. And then there's what's called a constructive or a regulatory taking. And that's where something like a zoning ordinance would restrict the use of land so much that a property owner can't use it. You're not going to get to the level of a regulatory taking unless you are depriving the property owner of all economical use of their land. So a increased setback requirement, unless the property can't be used or developed in any profitable way, I don't see how that would constitute a regulatory take.
Such as if they were a lot were twenty feet wide and you had ten foot side yard setbacks, that would mean that they couldn't use that parcel because there's no
Right, right. There's no way to use it. But if, you know, in, in these instances, what we're talking about here with these amendments, there's still buildable area. There's still uses that are allowable under the, under the zoning ordinance. So there is, you know, it, it might not necessarily be the highest and best and most profitable use that a property owner could engage in compared to building with zero foot setbacks and building something that's five stories tall. But, but I don't see how it'd be a regulatory taken.
And one last question. Are you aware of any case law showing that setbacks, the institution of setbacks have been ruled either unconstitutional or an improper taking or in any way impermissible by a city acting in the best interest of the city?
No, I'm not, I'm not aware of any such authority. I mean, I guess, subject to your extreme example where the setbacks are, are so extreme that there's no, you know, buildable envelope, which again, that's something in theory, I've never seen a case about it.
Thank you.
Of course.
Chairman, I just want to thank everybody that was here this evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Russ Garden. I'm also on the city council. I'm the representative to the planning commission from the city council. I'm also a lifelong resident of the city. My family's been here since the eighteen eighties. There's a couple of people in the audience have been, been around just about as long as I have. Have seen the waterfront change in ways that is positive in some ways negative. The name of my house is Calabou because my grandparents who owned a home actually were Mr. Badrick lives. I used to have a great view of Cal Mozu Lake and they named it Calabou and that I can remember when those first condominiums went up across the street and block of view and my grandparents were, have, you know, lamented because there weren't regulations that were trying to maintain what people love about the town. That's the view of the lake and the river. The waterfront is already regulated. It's been regulated for a number of years. I've seen things come and go. Wicks Park used to be Anchor Park on my department. It was a recreational facility and the city was forced enough to be able to buy that. So there's been an effort over the years to maintain the views of the water that people have come to enjoy that I've seen over the course of my time here. The interesting thing about the waterfront is that the, I like to call it eclectic. Everything that I see on the waterfront building wise was not as a result of anybody's grand plan or artful design. It was you know, and I'm looking at Dave Engel because he's been down there that entire time. The charter boats at the Riverwalk and, and at Big Lake Outfitters, you know, it would be a fish processing place right there where Star of Sagatuck. For many years, I used to go down there. And so anyway, my memories go way back in terms of what the waterfront looks like. But the, the key thing that is really interesting to me is that there was always an opportunity to walk up to the water, see the water. I knew many of the owners of the property and I still do today. I can walk onto the property and walk back and drop my pole in the water and fish and so forth. That's not necessarily for everybody to be able to do because it's private property. However, the point being is that there was always this encouragement to go down and use the water. And, you know, things change and I realize access may change as well. The goal that I have as a planning commissioner, city council member is to, you know, during the course of the summer, and I went out to Oxbow, I manned one of the tables. I know everybody on the planning commission manned the table is the things in the boards that Mr. Jurassic showed very quickly. We enforced, there was no surprises in those conversations. One of the same things that I've enjoyed over the course of the years, it puts me in my neighbors. You know, full-time residents and part-time residents, that the beauty of the waterfront is critical to the team's success in the community. Now, within that district, there's businesses that have to operate and there's mostly businesses, there's a few kinds of private residences on the water still, but my goal in this was to, you know, try to maintain some of what I've enjoyed and what visitors and residents have told me that they've enjoyed about the waterfront. But to not stand in the way of development. I think that our zoning ordinance changes, I think are, 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 are moving towards accomplishing that. What, what, what troubled me a little bit, and I think the comments that were made this evening and touching on it was in the actual zoning, both zoning ordinance itself is a special land use. And I thank everybody that's spoken tonight because it has highlighted for me that, you know, this is something that I need to think a little bit more about. Because if I look at the special land uses, art galleries, bed and breakfast, businesses, business professional offices, charter fishing tours, hotels, anns, marinas, commercial slash private parks, personal service establishments, restaurants, retail stores, I've seen all of those on the waterfront over the course of the years. And I would have no problem whatsoever with a special land use application for those uses. So my, in my mind, and, and I'm thinking now about what really could, you know, what really would constitute a special land use on the water. All the ones that I read through are ones that I've seen. So I'm, I'm rethinking that aspect of it, but I think generally, why don't think, I, I know that we're moving in the right direction on this. I've heard from so many different people over the years that the waterfront has luckily evolved into something really nice, but we need to work on making sure that it doesn't devolve into something we don't want. And that's the planning process. So I have a personal interest, but as well as I have a planning commission interest and city council interest in doing this right. And I don't have any qualms at all about saying if we need to rethink portions of this, we hold on. I'm not compelled to pass anything this evening. But I am glad people have come to speak. This is exactly what the process is about. I love it when people are here in the audience and listening to us and we're hearing them. And, you know, for those that spoke and said that they weren't heard, that is something for us to learn from as well. You know, we had, I don't know how many events that we were, you know, manning, we had tables out in front of city hall and so forth. Should we have walked over and knocked on some doors? Maybe that's something to learn.
Like into your, to your comment there, I think, when it, when it comes to when it comes to the public, as you were expressing there, I do believe that, you know, we started the conversations back when we put it on the agenda in January, you know, for twenty twenty-three, it was discussed when we talked about a waterfront moratorium and the reason for it. Everyone has been aware that these conversations have been happening on every monthly meeting that we've had with the planning commission. So yes, I think we could possibly learn. There's always that question of, do you want to practically go and knock on each door to get their, their feedback? But you've made it very much aware that these conversations were taking place. These packets are public and people have the opportunity. And like you have said, and like I've tried to say many times, we want to hear. This is part of the process. We want to hear from the people. We want to hear their thoughts. And I appreciate everyone that was said tonight. Like you, I do think that you know, the intention of having the permitted uses only be public services and everything else being special land use was more of the thought that it would give the opportunity for them to kind of present and, and for us to review what is, what is being proposed and does it meet all the zoning requirements as far as setbacks, lot coverages? As opposed to having a city administrator approve, like it is currently, it would be planning commission approved. I don't think anybody here was trying to say that we're going to regulate what could be, if it was any of those items, it would be available for a special land use presentation. And that they would be, if they were receiving something off of that list, they would have that opportunity. But I could see, you know, going back to how we've had it in our existing ones, where we have a list of what's permitted, where if you meet all the requirements, then if that's a permitted use versus having it as a special land use, if that is something you know, that we're hearing tonight, I do think that we need to continue to evaluate. And I agree for myself, I would say I would like not to move forward with any recommendation at this time because I think we do need more time to deliberate. Is that the best approach? Of having it all be special land use versus permitting? That's for me.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, from my experience, it's not often that we get this many speakers at a public meeting. Number one, the potential that we get several letters of opposition, that tells me there's a disconnect here somewhere.
Right. Somehow we're not communicating what our intention was to what is being perceived.
Yeah, I, I, I agree and it, and also appreciate, you know, people reaching out. And maybe some focused opportunities to meet with folks to get questions answered and to, to really talk it through and learn more. Cause I, I, you know, the intention was not to, you know, the, the intention is to preserve what we all love. I think everybody in this room and not to, you know, to take away people's abilities to.
Correct. Because as Mark, Mr. Lachey was kind of referencing to, everything that's in existence today would be grandfathered. And therefore, nothing would change for any existing parcel. Question became if somebody wanted to redevelop or to sell the properties and they were then to be redeveloped, what would be the new zoning that they would be required to meet? Not that we were going in and saying, oh, you're going to lose part of your property. I mean, again, if we, obviously we have a disconnect to those who've been willing to speak, which is a, a large percentage of property owners that are within the waterfront and we do appreciate it. And as we said earlier, we will listen and I think you're seeing that we are going to be reevaluating and coming back to, trying to determine what changes would be satisfactory to the owners that are in place, given the fact that we still have a desire to try to preserve the future of the waterfront as we are looking forward. So it, you know, doesn't mean that we're not going to be making recommendations at some point, but that we potentially will listen and review with what we have heard from the owners here tonight. Your side?
I mean, the only thing I'll add, I, I do have some housekeeping questions after we get through kind of the broader issues that have been raised. So I don't want to overlook those. It does strike me that you know, one, just an observation, and I don't want to, I, I don't know how to address it, but you know, I think one of the things that might have been a little challenging, at least about comparing, it was pretty easy for, to compare, I think, the west side of the river because it's an existing zone that was tweaked by creating the new zone. We didn't redline existing requirements. So I don't, I don't just throw that out as a thought that sort of seeing tan, more tangible differences in what's happening might, might be helpful to the public as well. Maybe, I don't know if that would be a chart or, because I see why we had to create the new section entirely, but it's not redlined against existing language.
Good point. And I think would we require that Jake or David tabling it for now or just we, we don't need a motion or anything to table it. We would just continue discussion?
I, I think I'd move to table it.
Move to table, correct?
Yeah.
May I make, before we table?
Absolutely.
Couple of comments. Before I moved to Sagatuck, I served fourteen years on a, a city council in Silverland Detroit. And interestingly, the most common complaint that a city council gets there or anywhere is I didn't know about this. I'm being surprised. You didn't come and knock on my door. There, in my opinion, there is an affirmative duty on the part of any citizen, what business owner, private citizen in a community to keep someone aware of what's going on. As the chair said, we've been talking about this since January. So the the refrain that I've been surprised, I didn't know, you didn't come and directly ask me doesn't carry a lot of weight with me, but I'm glad you're here tonight. I'm glad you're expressing your opinions. I also have an inkling that a lot of the comments tonight here are saying Are saying. On the one hand. We applaud you for what you do. We applaud that there's going to be something done about the waterfront. But what's unspoken or is literally spoken is, but don't affect my business, don't affect what I'm doing, don't affect me in any way whatsoever. And. You know, I mean, I I I think that that's a disservice. To us as planning commissioners who represent all of the residents. Excuse me, all of the citizens of the city of Sagatuck. Um, and the final comment I'll make is that. For some people to say that. People who come here occasionally or who are tourists or maybe come once in a while. Uh, have greater weight than someone who owns a business here. I I I find that unfortunate because I have talked to full-time residents, many, many full-time residents. In this city about this issue, and many of them were surveyed and many of them responded to the survey. I don't know if it was twenty-five percent. I didn't crunch those numbers. I'm not going to dispute you. But the ones who surveyed, the ones who I've talked to uniformly have certain ideas about how the waterfront should be maintained. To make our city not like other cities that they can go to that aren't that far away. Where the water fronts have been destroyed in terms of height, in terms of accessibility, in terms of public use. And people in this community value our waterfront and water waterfront to be as as. Um, sustainable as it is for the indefinite future. And that is what I, at least as one planning commissioner, that is my goal. And I'm absolutely fine with tabling this. I'm absolutely fine with talking to any or all of you. Um, and uh, but those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, and I concur with. Again, it's it's looking at the future. No one's changing anything about what is in existence at this time. Do we have additional comments that would like to be made at this time or? Ever receive a motion for table?
Report.
And the motion is forwarded. I on this, I think we should call voice, not voice, a roll call. So if you would please call roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Roger? Broker?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Father?
Yes.
Weshay?
Yes. Yes.
Steve, before we move on, is there a way to get um to kind of formally get more feedback or to ensure that we? Have dialogue with the businesses who are.
Yeah, that's. And that's why I didn't know, like, should we close the deliberation? Because I think the next thing I really wanted to talk about was how do we want to move forward? So, yes, we're not going to make any recommendations tonight. We table that. But the, you know, suggestions for trying to move forward, we obviously will try to work with David and counsel. But. Do we think that we need to have? Like a workshop with business owners or what other question? What ideas would you have? We can reach out and ask public in.
You can track a couple of issues, call the street. Have not been updated properly. The couple of things that I think. Say this and see if correct. Most ourselves, that's something we may. I mean, I've heard it, right? No, the north side. At the least update one for documentation.
But you know, it's it's tough without RC being here, but I think having opportunities for. You know, people here and other owners who are in this area who have quite, you know, who just want to make sure they understand. You know, how they would be affected. Um, I think we have a sense of the special land use, but I just want to, I think it we would all benefit from. Making sure everybody has time to examine their.
And I'm guessing that maybe what we could do, at least a suggestion would be into the packet for December, if we are bringing this back to the front, would be to have. Was referenced earlier, potentially like a chart that just kind of shows. The Water Street Preservation District. Requirements next to what was Water Street North and Water Street South. So that it's visually, even though it doesn't have to actually be in in the ordinance, but it's in the summary piece. That when it gets sent out to everyone and they would have the opportunity of visually looked at and saying, here's what I'm allowed now. If I, and again, nothing changes with what they can currently do and the way they can currently operate their business. It's if they were to want to redevelop their property or if they wanted to sell and a new person wanted to redevelop. What would be the differences between what they could do currently versus what they could do in the future? That was kind of like laid out. And I think that would give them an opportunity to at least kind of see that if we're not trying to regulate or to to restrict what they would be able to. To do. And I do think as commissioners, we have to kind of address. You know, do we want to have permitted uses like we had in each of the two existing zones? Or have virtually no permitted uses of the services and everything be special land. Um, which would then. Which would then say that if somebody came and said they want to put a gallery in and they met all the requirements, that it could happen without having to go through a special land use presentation in front of the planning commission. So I think those are kind of items that we would want to continue to discuss.
So question, so since the the intent of the special land use was actually to give more flexibility.
I know.
If it shifts to a permitted use, then. That flexibility, does that flexibility, I'm assuming, go away?
We could still have it.
Okay.
And that would be if the app.
It it just, it brings it here. So so it was the P U D, it was giving the, and I misspoke. So it's the. Because what we were trying to do really is to create. An opportunity, one for, you know. Incentives to extend the boardwalk, to have the the sightlines to the water. In exchange for flexibility for developers. So would and we would we lose that if we go to a permitted use? Okay.
No, no, the the computing process is voluntary. Um, it it is intended to be a win-win. It's supposed to be a collaborative planning process from the city. And and developer, um, and that if there's a city benefit that's that's achieved as well as the developer, uh, gets a benefit from. Extra footage or radar density or 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 things that would certainly affect them. And then financial or or however, what their development was maybe.
Because David, if if that was the situation, like if all the ones that were. In the current proposed. Following special land use, if they were all moved to permitted uses. And someone who owned that parcel wanted to redevelop, long as they were developing something that met all the other requirements as far as setbacks, lot coverage. They would be able to proceed without having a presentation to the planning commission for special landings. But yet if they wanted to kind of have a more flexible plan, they could ask for. It to become a planned unit development, P U D. At which time they could then make the presentation for what they were willing to kind of offer to be able to get variances. On like a lot of coverage or segments, correct?
Great, thank you.
What we do, I think we, you can also look at a. Approach the special age process, we we could allow for migrate uses, you know, up to the surface where footage or up to. Then we could develop thresholds for special end of review. Um, it even could even be, you know, the one situation I am envisioning too, this is a simple case, a municipal one, third of the happens to special land use. Um, that might be one that we. Do not want to trigger that process. Uh, so I think I I can look at that in a way that we can maybe have a. A threshold for whether to trigger special reviews. So I I I think the point's well taken about about the number of special agencies, and maybe there's a way that we can satisfy, um, lay down our concerns if we look at that a little.
Because I think as a community, we've always been very fortunate. That, at least in my experience of being in the city, and you've been longer, I know, that we've always had. Planning commissioners that, again, like I've said earlier tonight, really are always trying to look at what's the betterment for the community and for its citizens. And so, you know, we all know as. Part of the commission that we're thinking, oh, if somebody came to us with a special land use. And it was, it met all the requirements and it met what was good for the waterfront, which is all these type of businesses, we'd approve it. But I do hear the public who are saying. Yes, but you may not be there. I guess we always want to think that we're always going to have members who are just like ourselves that are going to be diligent and try to always. Be open and listen to and react and make judgments. But I understand the concerns of not knowing who may be there in the future and wanting to kind of. Preserve that. So I appreciate, again, all the comments that we did here here this evening. Right, because, you know, as we're talking amongst ourselves and we're looking at this. We all know that we've had projects that came before us. That got approved on the waterfront that. Met all the requirements. And then after it was done, people have said to us, why did you allow that? And we said, well, it got it, it was allowed because it met all the requirements. And we don't have any type of ordinance in place. That gives us the ability to say, no, that can't be built because it doesn't meet what we believe. So what that's why it became a part of the process here to a part of the project for this year. Was to kind of take a look at our ordinances and try to determine, you know, do we have? The proper restrictions that would enable us to be able to say as we move forward. This is what's being built is what we envision.
Yeah, Jim and Man's uh, question, when is our zoning administrator due back from? Thank you. I, is the city manager still on the? Call? Okay. Uh, my thought is to engage with both of them to find out a way in which we can get some feedback. We've gotten a lot of feedback already, but some more focus feedback. And maybe even a suggestion to have a focus meeting with the planning commission and clearly specifically about this and that feedback to find to what. Because I first, I think we're on the right track. We have some further adjustments to make, and that's why this feedback is.
Correct, exactly.
So I would think coming on the city manager and the zoning administrator to work, that's something. For us to get that feedback in a more focus, because the general theme, I think I understand, but I want more specifics in terms of.
I could even see a reach out to a specific survey to each of the property owners. Asking them. Specifically what the questions are, or if this was changed, would you be? As opposed as to what you currently are. I'm not saying everybody's going to become in favor, only because, let's face it, if I have zero setback now and I'm sort of have to have ten feet, I'm not going to like it. But if you had the ability to do with your property what you wanted. Given these reasonable new requirements, would that be satisfactory to you? And I think if we can conduct something like that at the city level. At least it gives everybody the opportunity. It's targeted right to the individual owners of those parcels. Yeah, and I think it's. And I appreciate, you know, the, you know, we don't have public comment. I appreciate that. Um, and I think that's why when we talk about a survey, I would want to do it via a direct email or a direct phone call. You know, it's not going to be something, hey, go on a, go on the website. It would have to be a direct reach out, because again, if you're not in town currently. Or if you are wintering away, you would still have access to your email. You could kind of respond or make make that phone call. As I. So Gardner just said, I think we've been on the right track and everyone's kind of been the same. Positive view that we are trying to. Put an ordinance in place that preserves the waterfront and still gives a lot of flexibility to people to be able to not only operate exactly the way they are currently. But to be able to redevelop within a reasonable measure. Very good. Well, that concludes item A.
We'll move on to the last one.
So I was getting ready to say since.
You're nine oh five.
There is, um. Item B underneath new business is to continue discussion on the short-term rental task force recommendations.
Thank you.
Thanks, all of you.
Thank you. You want to hear about short-term rentals?
Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
May impact you, might impact you somehow. You don't know until you hire an attorney.
What's that? I'm trying to get to, it starts on page two fifteen. Is it nine o'clock? We give that to Sarah, please. Thank you.
Yeah, two fifteen.
Starting on page two fifteen in our packet is the discussion for short-term rental task force recommendations. Um, I know that, again, obviously Ryan is not here. We've all been part of. This process. And what we have seen, you know, coming from the task force chaired by. Van Anderson was the recommendations that were made and the presentation made to us as well as city council that went through all recommendations from the short-term rental. What Ryan had put together for us, the zoning administrator. In our packet is kind of taking all of those recommendations and breaking out the ones that were. Recommendations to the planning commission. So if you recall, a number of the short-term rental recommendations was for city administration to review this. Or for planning commission to review. And so Ryan has put together the chart. That kind of shows. The task force recommendations that related to the planning commission. And then next to it was the existing current zoning regulations that were in place, if any. And again, those start on. Page two fifteen, two sixteen, two seventeen through two eighteen. As you'll see, there's a number of recommendations that are included. Now, some of the ones that we, when Ryan and I were discussing this, and I think I discussed with each on the. Phone is that we can go through and we can look at each recommendation one by one. And we could make a decision to. Recommend it and have a motion on each one. We could go through all the recommendations and kind of determine which ones we think. Would be best served by a police action by city council, meaning that we don't think that we need to deliberate on it here. That it's consensus, it could be sent to city council and they could actually just do it as a police. Power, um, as an ordinance. Other ones that we may determine, yes, we do think that we need to incorporate that into. Our ordinances, and therefore we would need to have revisions made to the ordinance, have additions put in, you know, for these recommendations. And then we have a public period at a future meeting in regards to those recommended changes. I know we have the ability, you know, to kind of go through them all and then group them in those two different categories. We don't have to make decisions on any of them here this evening. I think it's our goal is to keep it's moving forward. But at the same time. This, just like the waterfront that we just discussed, is probably the two biggest issues that the city. And the citizens have told us, you know, that they wanted us to address. We've taken the time to do it, and I just want to make certain that as we're getting closer to the recommendation phase. That we do have the sufficient time to make certain that we have, you know, thought each each of them through. At this time, is there a preference amongst anyone as to whether we would go through them one by one and kind of group them? Um, that's how, that's at least how I originally kind of first perceiving that we would do this. I guess. Right now, I was thinking we would have, you know, deliberation, and if like, if we went to one and we've seen that we had consensus amongst us. That we all thought, yes, this is going to be a good recommendation, but it'd be best. Just let city council handle it as a police power. Then we can note that. And then once we have finished our deliberation, we could. Group all the ones together, make one motion that these are the ones that we would send. As recommendations and the others, we would continue to deliberate amongst ourselves or. If we are determined that we would want to incorporate. Changes to the existing ordinance.
So I think.
I agree.
Discussion that I I'm not comfortable saying, let's recommend the city council because.
I think that's perfect. Yeah. And that's why I was saying, I think we can go through each one, have a conversation, only if. We, it appears that everyone. We, it appears that everyone is in full agreement with one. We would possibly make a motion, but there's no designated intention of an emotion at the end.
And page two eighteen, zoning administrator actually.
Right, yeah, which, when you're talking about where it says, which recommendations does the planning commission agree? Is there further data or analysis that they desire? Does the planning commission wish to evaluate caps on residential? Are some of the current short term rental regulations and the zoning ordinance? Are some of the current short term rental regulations, zoning ordinance or recommendations by the task force better suited with police powers? And that's kind of what we were, that's kind of saying, so it's, the idea was to kind of take a look at each of the recommendations. Kind of first see if we have a consensus as to whether we think that would be a good recommendation. Is it something we would want to spend more time on? If so, what are we looking for? What information will we need? To be able to say yes or no, that's a good recommendation.
True, true. Given the hour. And. The importance of this particular topic, just like the previous one was important.
Right.
But given the hour, given the complexity of this and given the importance of this. I'm, and given our past experience with city council in terms of recommendations that we sent forward to them. Is it possible legally? In terms of process wise. Is it possible that there could be a joint meeting between the council and planning commission? That we could talk about this?
As a, thank you. As a sitting council member, I say yes. The concern I would have. Planning commission acts as. Mission for city council, and that's the way it's designed. I, I, the only concern I would have with that is to. Set an expectation with the council that we're going to ask them every time we're going to talk about making decisions. That's not.
That's not playing.
No, I understand, but that, that, that would be just a concern. I do think based on reading the preparer or reading the document that zoning administrator prepared. And considering that we have some new council members joining, this is going to be some new information except for. Anderson, it's going to be some new information. I think there would be some benefit to walk into and saying, some of these screen policies. That's the city council policy discussion. Now, there's some recommendations in the report about, you know, some of the numbers, but ultimately that's a policy decision.
But. Yeah, I, I would strongly recommend that we collaborate with city council to the extent we can. It's complicated. It's time consuming. We've got two really time consuming things we're doing and. Trying to do them both at the same time is challenging. But also I think, I think planning brings a different perspective from council and vice versa. And I think. Sharing information and perspectives will lead to better. Understanding and then decision making and then, you know, stuff that needs to come back to planning. Can come back to planning and things that need to, you know, that's policy that will go to council will go to council. But it seems like it will be a lot more efficient with time. And I also think we'll have better. I think it will, it will be a better process because we'll. We'll kind of get a sense of the policy. You know, concerns and issues as we're thinking from a planning perspective.
You know, this is a unique, because it is such an important issue. The one thing of the, Mr. Gardner has already kind of pointed out, and I talked to a couple of other people on council. If we were to solicit their opinions through either a joint type of workshop or reach out. They have each said, well, has planning commission at least gone through the recommendations? And determine which ones they would be in favor of themselves. And I said, well, no, that's really what tonight's purpose was. So. I know that we, from a time standpoint, we don't want to, but. To go into a joint workshop where we haven't even. Reached a consensus amongst ourselves as to which ones we are in favor of. You know, so when they ask us, well, you know, which ones are in question, I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, with respect. It seems like this is the kind of issue though, we're planning. I mean, we've had a few instances and the short term moratorium where this body deliberated and. I believe it was, if it wasn't a unanimous vote, it was maybe one vote short. And sent a recommendation to city council that. I mean, didn't, you know, it was not met well. And. And given the, the nature of the topic, I, I think. It would be helpful in that situation for council to hear actually the planning commission's perspective. As well as for planning to hear the city council's perspective. I just, I just think it would. It would, it would keep us from wasting time. But I, you know, I, I get, I get what you're saying.
Right. I'm just curious. I mean, it was more of like, if we look at it in total here. How many recommendations? There was ten on fire safety, one in trash. Six. Seven, eight. Eight fire safety. Crash, ten general, I came up with twelve.
Twelve plus the caps.
Right.
Right? Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. No, I was just, I, I was just curious where we stood. If I threw out, you know, if we picked. Floor reducing the occupancy limits to align more with a single family residential dwelling. Such reduced occupancy would entail allowing two persons per bedroom with a maximum of 12 people. That was the recommendation from the task force. If that was to be put in place, our current zoning says occupancy of each dwelling unit shall be limited based upon calculations by the BOCA, National Property Management. Approve section one fifty dot oh three. And there's no set maximum. So if that was, if I was going to council and they said, well, what does planning think on that? Does planning believe that that is a good recommendation that from the task force? I wouldn't, or would that be something that we would say? Well, that's what I'm saying. So we don't, we don't even know ourselves yet. So to take it to, to ask council what they think, it's, we haven't even recommended it to council yet.
Actually, I, so I can clarify my suggestion.
Right.
It was not to ask council necessarily what they think. It was basically to allow them, allow us to, I think the word collaborate is a good word in this case. This is, I mean. This is of significant importance in terms of the city. The decisions that we make. We've been working on it for a year. And essentially, if you want us to go through and that's fine with me. And we either say we don't know enough, or we do, or we don't, or we approve, or we think that it's okay. But I really think that given the complexity of this issue, it would really be helpful for me, speaking for myself. To be able to get city council members in a room with planning and talk about this. Some of this may be pretty simple in terms of police order. Enforcement, that sort of thing, but most of it, I don't think is that simple. And. And I, and given the research background of council. In terms of recommendations coming from planning. And those recommendations basically, for I'm sure perhaps a good reason. But that's not been explained either. Those recommendations being. Not accepted in different decisions being made. I just think, given that, given this, some kind of conversation. Between planning and council, at least to me, would be helpful.
The bootstrap of what she's saying, a couple deficits I see with us proceeding right now are one. Brian Cummins isn't here, so he would have to listen to the tape. Two, we don't have a single city council member online right now. Or nerd who is in present and. Future commissioner, council member Anderson. So again, they would have to listen to the tape if we were to go through these. And apparently they don't do that because with respect to the outdoor dining and the dates of outdoor dining. I had council members contact me to find out what our thinking was and why we did those dates and this, that and the other. So I don't, I, and to your point, for what it's worth. I don't know that we have to speak as a body on each of these issues to city council. If we were to collaborate and have a joint meeting. We individually planning commissioners can say, this is what I think about item X. And, and city council can take that. You know, I mean, without, you know, without knowing it's a five, two vote or whatever, but if, if, you know. They can take our input as a planning commissioner individually and collectively and, and take that together. So I, I, I see a real benefit again, in, in terms of the complexity of all this. The last thing I want is somebody contacting me later and saying, well, I don't, I'm not quite clear on what you guys decided about noise. Or what your thinking was behind noise. It's like, okay, if we're all in the same room, then you know, you, you've heard it directly. So. Again, I, I like the idea of a, a, a joint discussion about these items.
Co-deliberation.
There you go. Buzzword of the night.
I know I made it up for this. Well, I don't know. I had never used it before.
Great market.
Yeah, and just to qualify, I'm not opposed to that. I, I just, I.
I didn't say I was opposed to it. I just, when people were asking me, you know, which. Did you, because they, they said, if you want to do a joint meeting, did you want to go through all recommendations? Or were there certain ones that you wanted to have discussions on? And I didn't have an answer because I said, we really haven't deliberated to the point to where. I know. I think every recommendation that came from the task force was valid. I think we all kind of felt that. And so it's more of a question. What would, what would we be looking for from the collaboration, you know, from, from their standpoint? You know, if it's a situation of, let's use that maximum. It's like, well, if we were going to make a recommendation on that, we, I would like to know what their feeling is. If you're putting a number in there, because if, if we were putting a number, I think when some of the conversations I was having earlier. I would say before I could put a number of what the maximum would be, I'd have to get some more data from the out, from the outside. Maybe the fire commissioner would have to come in and kind of give us his evaluation on where would we limit?
Well, and that's where the number came from.
Because we just, we just can't come up and say, it's, you know, some communities have said ten, some communities have said fourteen, some don't have any restrictions. So it's. We would need to have some justification and I would, and I'd want that justification to be known to the public as well as to city council as to why that number was chosen. Because what we can't send the city council is just, well, here's the recommendations, which ones do you want to do and then send it back to us? And then we'll like write the ordinance. That's not the way the process works.
Yeah, I would just add that, and I want to say this in the most friendly fashion possible. For a, for, for the city council to sit, listen to us, walk through these will be a very good education. The deliberative process around this, the co-deliberation process, I think it's of value to the city council. We just don't do enough of this and it's a great opportunity to set a precedent for us to say. We're going to walk through this as a planning commission discussion. We want the city council there to hear. And to have feedback.
And to participate. I mean, I would like them to participate in it. I mean, I think it's, it, we will all benefit from everybody's perspective and point of view and it will. Cause I would almost bet a cat, and I never bet my cats, that. If whatever we send to council, they're going to ask all of the questions we're going to be asking. And so we'll be having. The same conversation again, and that just doesn't seem like a good use of. I'm in support. I'm. But Steve, I, you know, you are.
No, I, as a, as a chair, I really wanted to try to open it up and discuss the pluses and minuses to it. And whether or not we would want to just go into it and deliberate and have discussion on each item. As a group, or if we wanted to have a consensus as to which ones we would like to have their input on. So I didn't have a preference one way or the other. I do think that this is a topic. That I feel having a special meeting, a special type of workshop is justified unlike anything else that we have done. Where I thought that I didn't see any need that we would have to have their input prior to us making our recommendation. In this situation, because it does involve a number of things that we're going to ask. Is it best to have council address without going through planning? Because every one of these recommendations, we could put in an ordinance. It's just a question of, is it best to go in an ordinance? Or is it best just to have it handled, you know, directly through a legislative police order? And. Or I think that's really kind of what I'd be curious, you get their input. Right. And I think that's like I was using on some of the calls today where we're talking is. If I was looking at noise, I think there's probably be a consensus here. And it would just be a matter, okay, well, should we send that directly to city council? And let them put that on their agenda so that it can be adopted as a citywide type of policy.
But, but even as an ordinance, they would approve an ordinance change.
But we have to recommend it to them.
Well, right, but it's still going to go to council and they're still going to want to weigh in on it. So. I mean, it's like, why don't we just do that upfront so that we're all.
Well, as some of the people on council have told me, they rely on the planning commission to do all of background due diligence. And make a recommendation that they can feel comfortable, you know, with unless there are specific questions that would come up. And, you know, so therefore.
Why they punted it to us in the first place a year ago.
Right.
That, at the last election when they all said. Those up for election a year ago said, oh no, we're not going to deal with it. We're going to, we're going to handle it off to the planning.
Well, and. And I'll just say it, I mean, the track record isn't, I mean, from my personal point of view, the track record is questionable here. So I mean, there had been at least three decisions that we did due diligence. Spent a lot of time on late into the night and it goes to city council and with no explanation. The decision is not taken and another decision is made. And, and that's, I mean, we didn't make the recommendation personally. It was as the planning commission doing the job that we're supposed to do. And so at the end of the day, and especially with Ryan not here. I just think that at least personally. I just think in terms of the relationship between planning and city council and respect to us both doing our jobs. And this, it's time to meet together and collaborate.
And I think we'll, we'll get a better result. I mean, I really think we will benefit from each other's co-deliberation.
I'm just trying to understand what direction am I going to be giving to Ryan? When I say, okay, we want to have a joint workshop and he presents it to council. Is he presenting that we want to go through each of the recommendations one by one and deliberate it with council? Or we want to, which is kind of what I'm hearing. So.
So I, and I don't want to, I don't want to butt in here, but I do think one of the things that, that Ryan highlighted in his recommendation is. You know, what aspects of these regulations? Do we think maybe would be better reserved for police power ordinance? And, and what would be better in the zoning ordinance? And I mean, I think there's an opportunity. Like I, I know the, the council relies heavily on the planning commission that even if it is going to be a police power ordinance, does the planning commission have a role in that?
But do we recommend?
From my experience in other communities that regulate short term rentals, the vast majority of them. They do so primarily through a police power ordinance. So the zoning aspect. Of short term rental regulation is essentially to define it and say where they can be. And that's pretty much it. And then the regulatory police power ordinance sets forth. You know, standards for operation and licensing and all of that. You know, standards for operation and licensing and all of that that, that applies to the entire community. So I think a good example of. The way that, um. This kind of regulatory scheme would normally work is the city's floating home regulations. So the zoning ordinance, I think it just defines floating homes. It says this is the district they can be in. And then that's, that's pretty much all the, and maybe it has like some parking requirements, things like that related to the land use aspect of it. But then the operational and licensing side of that, that falls into a police power ordinance.
And like in that situation, we did as planning commission, we drafted the recommended ordinance. The language for the police power sent it to the city council for them to approve.
Yeah.
You know, it's good. So there was the zoning kind of laid out where floating homes could be, but then the orders was written, reviewed by planning and recommended. We know, as opposed to just going straight to council. Now that some of these, I know that you were saying are not zoning, but. Wouldn't you, like, if we made a decision that we were going to say, okay, no more than fourteen people maximum in, in a home. That could be written right in where we describe short-term rental, that restriction could be listed.
Be the, the thing that kind of gives me heartburn about that is this goes back to our discussion earlier. It's that zoning is not retroactive. So you kind of run into, uh, from an enforcement standpoint, a, a lot of complication. Administratively, trying to determine, okay, what, what occupancy standards is this short-term rental that was established prior to the date? Of the amending ordinance subject to. With a police power ordinance, there's no grandfathering unless it's explicitly written into that ordinance. So if you say that, you know, these are the new occupancy standards. That applies to the entire city as soon as that ordinance takes effect.
Got it. As opposed to putting it in zone.
Yeah. So, so from a zoning standpoint, if there are things that you want to, a- a- again, regulate from a land use perspective. Or especially if you want to craft certain kind of regulations by district. So if you want to impose different capacities by different zoning districts. That is something maybe that could be explored through a zoning ordinance and through a police power ordinance kind of concurrently to try to get around that. That, you know, retroactive non-conforming use problem.
Right.
But yeah, I, i- it's, it, it gets complicated, especially when it's something that's licensed and there are renewals. Um, when you. Change the regulatory landscape, just in a zoning ordinance, you, you can kind of end up with a patchwork of who is subject to what and how do you keep track of it.
So then, so the question would be, you've read through these recommendations. Would almost all of these be best handled as police order as opposed to. Based on that, I'm thinking there's very few of them where we would.
So unless there are, I, I mean, other aspects that you want to tackle, and I know like one of the issues that comes up is, is that there are. Restrictions in zoning districts, uh, relative to what floor you can have a short-term rental on. Maybe that's an aspect that's handled through, through a zoning amendment, I think. But defining them saying where they're allowed. I mean, i- in my opinion, yeah, those are, those are the two things that are best handled through the zoning ordinance itself. And then a licensing ordinance is probably best for all the rest.
Right. Because it would be more of, if we were saying that there was going to be a requirement that they post their license number to advertise. That would be better as a police power ordinance, not in zone.
Yeah. And, and, and that's because it would apply to anyone who has a license anywhere throughout the city. Well, a- and yeah, exactly.
And we wouldn't be involved with drafting that ordinance.
I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the case. I mean, as Steve was just saying, you guys, you guys were, yeah, instrumental in the floating homes ordinance. And I think like, I mean, that. Like by statute, i- it's not necessarily your required duty to write police power ordinances. But there's nothing that says that the planning commission can't be heavily involved in that process and making recommendations.
City council has, the reason why we've done it is they appreciate that we would review it first, kind of get. Our, you know, sign off on it and then we make a recommendation for them to approve. But it could go directly to them. Almost in every one of those situations, it could have been presented to council without coming from plan.
Certainly, yeah. In theory, it could just go directly to the council. But I mean, especially if it's being developed in conjunction with zoning amendments, I think it makes a lot of sense. As when I'm those, you know, the, the decision process kind of following the same path.
Is given that, when I read through all of the recommendations that currently involve planning commission. Almost all of them are probably best handled through a police power ordinance. As opposed to re- looking at our current zoning ordinance. So which I think makes it even a better case for why it would have a joint type of session to have council's input. Before we would even make recommendations to them.
I want to, I want to just add to what future bad drive said, uh, I think we need to find. What it is we want to talk about with them to what's expected out of that meeting, but. Clear terms, because we know what we're doing. But we know what we're doing, but we also have some experiences that we want to make sure that we don't go down a path that's going to be, you know, it's not going to conduct for anybody. So, uh, I think that's important to just describe why we want to meet, what we expect to get out of it. To or back to original, I think, that I can comment about, you know, we should maybe take. Because that might familiarize, well, familiarize ourselves, but two is that it might inform some of the discussion that's on the recommendations. Cause I think there is, there is some, there is some way.
There's a few areas that you're like, see that we would want to add it into the zoning and it would become. That it wouldn't be retroactive, but it would be in effect, would be getting moving forward. But there's other ones that are definitely there that I think will end up being police actions through legislative ordinance.
Yeah, it's a pretty short ordinance now.
It's very short.
I mean, I think. Right. I, I think what I would see is the goal of that meeting is one to just ensure that everybody. Understand sort of, you know, what the task force learned, excuse me, and what they recommended. Get to some discussion and consensus about the recommendations. Um, I think some of them will be fairly straightforward. I think, um, you know, some will take longer and then I think caps would be the one that would. You know, require some work. And I do think, um, so I think the outcome is consensus on. Where to go. I mean, um, and you know, recognizing that council's the policymaking body, but I think, you know, planning has a good. Good expertise and lens to provide feedback on that and then, um, and then proceed. I mean, I think it would be similar to what this group would do or council would do, um, but just doing it together.
Right. So I guess the tip, if we were communicating it to council. Is that we would like to have a joint deliberation, code deliberation on each of the points as if we were doing it in our own meeting, but having them present.
Hey, I just want to suggest that then, after that meeting, we come back and we go again.
Right.
But I want to keep control over that person. I have to, that they've asked us to do this.
That's what I, I, I want to turn it in. I don't want it to be like, okay, at that meeting, we're making any decisions, but it needs to come back to planning. Question is going to be, you know, when does that meeting take place? Do we, you know, at first I had some comments where someone said, well, let's do it. Right prior to the next meeting for ourselves. Well, if we did it like at six o'clock on the December sixteenth. I guess we'd have their input and then we could immediately go into the planning meeting, but I don't think that then it's like, well, we didn't really listen or listen.
Yeah, there's, there's no way we could do this in an hour.
Well, what I was curious, you know, can we, is that first, we, we will require a special workshop though.
This is a critical portion of the community. I'm, I'm personally invested and, uh, I'll make myself available for those conversations. As both the council member and.
Then I will work with Ryan before, I think we're all in agreement. To come, you know, have him communicate over to, um, you know, city council to try to come up with. You know, a date that we would have it. And then we can explode it out to you because I don't want to pick a date here tonight. I don't even know if we have a date that would work for all of us without even going and hearing. What they would be available for.
But you, and put this out there, this is a, uh, uh, maybe a possibility is that we could then, we could talk about this during the workshop.
That's what I was wondering, would it be, could it be a workshop item? And then I don't see why not. And then it would just be a question of, I have to ask Grimes, I don't know the answer here. If. If we were doing it as a joint meeting, can we have just one part of the workshop? Joint to where planning, you know, or does a whole meeting have to be a joint? Right. Cause I don't know the answer there to be able to kind of say, oh, there's a workshop. All the planning commissioners are here, but then all of a sudden, when we get to that section, it becomes joint. But I'm certain that there's got to be a way of kind of working around it.
Yeah, I only mentioned that because it is scheduled as opposed to.
Correct.
Well, yeah, I don't think, I don't think there probably will be a workshop next week. Yeah, I think.
Typically every other Wednesday?
The Wednesday before the council meeting.
Council says the first and third Monday.
I just put that, I don't, I just put that.
Right. I agree because I'm trying to think of, you know, I don't really see that they could do it before our next planning commissions. That's not enough time for us to really take everything there and then immediately. We could do a joint meeting at the next planning, but we are going to have other things on our agenda. So it's the same thing. How do you have a joint meeting where? So it almost has to be a meeting, either a workshop that. We could participate in just that portion of it as like a special guest, maybe, I don't know. Jake, do you know how that would work?
I don't know that. I haven't looked at that exact issue before. I think you probably could notice it just like as a special meeting. Right after the workshop and then go into the joint session like that.
That's true. So it's same day as the workshop, but the special meeting is actually taking place. And it's not on the workshops, city council's workshop agenda. It would just be something. But at least everybody is already together as far as council was on those days. Alright, so. That was going to be our course. Discuss that with Ryan. I don't think, since we didn't really, there was no need for emotion at any point during this. I don't think that we need to. Have anything other than just being able to kind of take our discussion or our conclusion to him. Anyone feel different? Does anyone feel differently than? And in fact, we will kind of conclude the new business for this meeting. Communications, the only communications that I had received were the ones related to the waterfront preservation district, which we both were. Both of those were read into the record. Sarah, I don't believe there was any additional communications that I was aware of that I've never seen. The report of the zoning administrator is included in our packets. I would encourage, I think it probably has looked through it. The one thing that I, um, did see when I was going through it myself. Is that I did notice there's a couple of new short-term rental applications. So many of the ones that we see regularly are. Renewals or it's a new owner, you know, just asking for it, but there was several and who is this one? That were new. So when people say, well, it's kind of over as far as the number of applications of like. So that is, at least for me, I thought that was a point that I seen. The other thing that I, I'm seeing in the report, which Ryan will be able to address at next most meeting. Is a lot more of these enforcement issues, which goes back to the importance of us making certain that each of the zones. Because some of the things he's enforcing now is because they don't meet what's required in that zone, be that very next block. It is allowed and that's kind of a question I know for him and he'll probably raise that with us. Um, so I suspect that would probably be the next big project that will come before us in twenty-four potentially. Um, but that's, so anyhow, his report is in there. I just encourage you, which moves us to the last public comment. Uh, this is public comment. Anything that you would want to address the planning commission on. And at this time, if you'd like to make a public comment, you raise your hand or you come up to the podium. And limit your comments to three minutes and give us your name as well as your address. And I do have one individual here who has earned.
I know.
Three minutes.
My name is Louis Allen. Uh, my husband and I are up here on Pleasant Street, seven thirty-one in May and. We, one of the ways we were able to make this work for us to finance it was to have. created. Um, I think we have a losing place. I just hope you understand that. We will, we are, we would love, we will, we want to follow what makes us good neighbors. So things with noise, trash, all of that, I think is wonderful. I know the fire department is already in this house. They told us the number. Uh, stay in the house. So I think there's a lot of. On regulations that you have already described with. Uh, and again, I just appreciate what you're doing. A part of this, that's why I'm here also. And so thank you for all your work and effort and.
Thank you for showing up, listening. Thanks.
And online, I know we have Gary.
Yes, Gary Medler, four sixty-one Vine Street. A comment on the waterfront development. I just want to point out that. If tonight, if you had recommended approval of this ordinance or whether you didn't. It doesn't change the regulatory scheme that all of these property owners would have to comply with. If you look at section one fifty-four point oh six oh. Any new non-residential principal structures, all expansions to existing non-residential principal structures. And all plans that the zoning administrator would deem as unique. Are required to go through the site, formal site plan review, which is the same review as a special land use. So if you don't change anything in the statute, whatever they're afraid of going forward. They're still subject to the same regulatory review. And I think the problem is, is there's really no incentive in the current ordinance. Or innovation or vision as to what's happening. Maybe the city and the property owners combine and share costs to maintain. The boardwalk so that they maintain access for the public. Because public access to their property, the boardwalk benefits them. Because then the public sees their businesses and uses their businesses. But in terms of the regulatory scheme, whether you adopt a new ordinance or not, it doesn't change that whatever they do in the future. That's new or redevelopment will, has to go through formal site plan review anyway.
Very good point. Thank you. Okay, very much. Seeing no additional comments in the room. I don't see any hands online. I will close public comment, which then moves us to item ten, commissioner comments. Do we have any commissioner comments at this point? I think we've made plenty during.
The only thing I would like to say, and I'll be quick about this, is that. Um, we can always do better. I'll be the first to admit that in terms of communication. But. My fellow citizens do have a responsibility.
Absolutely.
And I don't want us beating ourselves up because we've been working on this for a year. We have communicated time and time and time and time again. We have been deliberate in terms of soliciting community input. And, um, so I'm, well, I'll say we can always do better. I'm making no apologies.
I think it's, I've tried to say it several times, I believe that we all come to this, putting in a lot of time and effort. That we think, we try to think through everything. I'm not saying that we don't miss things periodically. Um, and that there is, I mean, we got a lot of public feedback, you know, here today, but the comment that. You know, no one reached out to, um, I don't take.
It's been, it's been, I mean, if you read the commercial record, I mean, there's been headlines in the commercial record. Um, um, public notices. I mean, I don't. Go to the website and this, this objection as far as I'm concerned. Um, came to my attention really pretty much over the past forty-eight hours. Um, so, um.
Came to my sense of right. Ryan would have occasion, the phone call started coming in while I was in Hawaii, you know, a five-hour time difference. So trust me, it was.
But, but I mean, I'm in, and to the, for the life of me.
It's.
Especially, I mean. I honestly don't know how. Even if this were implemented just as it is, I'm, maybe I just don't get businesses. But I don't know how businesses would be destroyed.
Or not.
Through this, through what was proposed, but nonetheless, I'm just saying on our behalf, I don't want us to beat ourselves up too bad.
And I think it's, as Commissioner Bernard said, you know, we can kind of learn and we can kind of say, well, is there something we could try to do? But I think that we have properly communicated and it'd be even tabling this to see. We've taken it further than what I think other commissions would have done and saying, hey, we've already gathered. We've taken it further than what I think other commissions would have done and saying, hey, we've already gathered all the data. We have it here. We can still go forward with recognition, but instead we said, let's take a month and try to like. Make certain and that we get the feeling, because we do what the community support.
Mm-hmm.
And. You know, I think tonight became apparent with a number of owners. That we're not ready, but I, but I do think that we've given them every opportunity up to tonight. It's unfortunate they waited until tonight. Kind of really get involved, but maybe they hadn't seen the full recommendation before tonight. So I'm trying to give them the benefit of the doubt.
And even, and even if, um. They hadn't been here and the objections hadn't been raised. I mean, the way this commission has worked, at least for as long as I've worked with all of you. I mean, we're pretty deliberate. We're pretty reasonable and it's likely we would have tabled in any way. Because it's a lot.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I just.
But I do think that, I think if, if it was put forward and, and recommended. As you said, it really wouldn't have impacted any of them immediately. And. Other than the fact that they would have had to come before the planning conditions for. Any approved for special land use approval. And we'll just, we'll continue to kind of discuss that next month, but I appreciate that comment. Is there any other comments from? Any other commissioner? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.